To order. No attendance, please. And we have a quick consent agenda to hires that we need to take care of since the school is vastly fast approaching. So is there a motion for approval for those? I'll move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. And with that, I'll turn it over to Andy, who's gonna show us a little bit from their administrator retreat the other day.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. This isn't on the agenda, so I only want to take a couple of minutes, but it's pretty important stuff. But I think that you will appreciate this. I think it all as you know, I took the administrative team to Oregon State University a couple of weeks ago, first day of our administrative service, and took them through a challenge course, which was six hours of team building, unified effort, just quite a few themes that are built in throughout the day, and a number of ground activities, as well as upper elevation activities. Anyway, I'm not gonna show you all of the gore details, so to speak, but I do want to show you a couple of video clips that are, I think, help describe, partially describe the purpose for the day, what we were doing. But I think, second of all, maybe even more importantly, the second video, a series of videos, is about perseverance.
The gore is actually what I was hoping to see.
The door? I thought there was a door.
Yeah, I got in a fight with Hannah, sorry.
And there's Mr. Swenson coming off. He's delayed, and this was really quite a safe event. I think I'm here thinking, district insurance, yes, we got district insurance approval for this. But here's one of the highlights of the day, was the zip line. This is Kevin Palmer enjoying himself on the zip line area. Did you get those back lights?
Good, how about to retreat?
Yeah. That's true, we should be doing that.
It'd be bad.
This is probably one of the more challenging events of the day. Eric, what's the name of this? You stand on top of a pole and you jump to a trackies bar. This is Eric, and this is a perfect example, there's really no volume at this point, this is a perfect example of students attempting oaks, and for some students, it just takes more than once. And you'll see the purpose here very quickly. That's probably a 10, maybe a 12 inch pole. And Eric is delayed off, you can see the... And there's somebody on the ground holding him, just in case he misses. He's about 25 to 30 feet in the air. So that's attempt, first attempt. So the second attempt. You can see Linda Myers to the left there on the horizontal beam. That was close.
It looks like it's far out there.
Oh my gosh, yeah, especially on the bottom, it looks like it's true.
Yeah. And this is a little more extended, it's a little longer segment, people will show Eric here just a moment, and he's third oaks again. But this is Theresa Gure that's on the left, assistant principal of the high school, and Linda Myers on the right, curriculum director. They're receiving some instructions on the ground, but they raise, they need to speak up there about how they're going to get past each other.
Was that Marilyn and Linda?
No, that's Linda and Theresa. And by design, they're supposed to hug, it's a safe way to get past each other. And Eric, of course, is standing up.
He's still trying.
Just waiting for him.
He can't jump, because when he jumps, it makes things bounce a little bit.
Now what do you do?
Yeah.
You just work.
Now you do pull-ups.
Yeah, oh man.
I felt so much after that, though, I'm like...
That's pretty good.
And they have delayed devices that actually lower them down. There are these really metal brackets that you slip the rope through, and they come down. Very sick. Oh, Theresa. Granny Potts was not being very nice. Anyway, that's the extent of those videos, I wanted to make sure that you folks got a chance to see that. Hi, Wally. Eric, grab those lights.
Now you're rock climbing, huh?
I've done that before, but I just don't like dangling through the air.
It's pretty good.
So with that, I want to... Each one of you received not only a copy of the agenda, but you received a copy of a sub-agenda for this evening, specific to your visioning and strategic planning and visioning portion of the meeting. And so I'm going to refer you to that. And I want to take a moment and introduce Jerry and Jim to you. And Jerry and Jim come to you with many years of experience individually, not just combined, in the education world, as both as teachers and as administrators for many years, and have worked through their own respective districts historically, as well as other districts, in doing exactly what they're doing here. So I think they're a very good choice for this district in developing a visioning process, or using a visioning process to establish quite a few things that I think are needed in this district. And if you recall, the last few years, we've spoken on occasion about the need to go through a strategic planning process, and what that looks like, and how important that is for a reference document in this district, as well as something to keep each of you as board, I think, as one element, but also as a significant reference for me as superintendent and all the administrators to use in decision-making and direction as we move ahead in with challenges ahead for any school district, and those, of course, specific to summer calls. So with that, I'm gonna let them do the majority of the talking, but I'm gonna introduce each of the board members to you. And Jerry, Jim, if you want to come up to these chairs, those are reserved for you, I'll do that. And I've given, I know I've given each of you the names of our board members, but now you put names with faces. So on your left is Owen Von Fleu. Owen is an attorney in town. And next to him is Tom Buchholz. Tom is a business owner and farmer. Wally Lehrman is a manager at Intel and also a farmer. I dare say part-time farmer, is there such a thing, Wally? Tim Roth is a local farmer as well, full-time farmer, even in the wintertime, whatever you guys do.
I don't know.
David Beeson, which I believe one or both of you may know.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
And David has described himself, and this is accurate, as a farmer and artist. And I think that's still accurate to this day.
Rancher.
Excuse me, sorry, sorry. Lakeview, I have to remember Lakeview.
Farmers spend the winter in the coffee shops. Ranchers are out working.
And Julie Norris is... Julie Norris on your right, and Julie is an office manager for a local dentist, which happens to be the dentist that I go to, was so embarrassed recently, when I literally drooled on her desk.
Of course, has to get that on video.
And our seventh member, Irv Stadley, is an excavator, business owner, and is in North Dakota. I do have Skype set up, and Irv is hoping to Skype with us this evening at some point. And so hopefully, you'll get a chance to meet him. Jim, Jerry, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Julie, did you want to say anything more about your background or...
Sure, I think a little bit. Because I think it's important for you to know a little bit about where we come from, since you're gonna be working with us pretty closely over the next lots of months. So again, my name is Jim Abbott. This is my 34th year in Education Oregon. Started out as a teacher several years, principal several years, superintendent lots of years, and of both school districts and ESDs. And I think that helps bring a little bit of perspective, given that one of the primary functions that a successful ESD superintendent must perform is, I had 20 districts, I was the largest ESD in the state, had 20 districts, to try to bring them together to find common purpose and work together pretty good of all. And not an easy task, but one that's definitely accomplishable. Interwoven in all of that, certainly been involved in many, many planning projects with, as Andy said, school districts where I worked, but also with school districts in the passing as a consultant. It's, I think it's rewarding work, because I strongly believe in a district having the purpose and the vision very, very clear out there, for everyone to understand what it is, and then from that direction, creating specific plans year by year that you're going to accomplish. That gives confidence to your staff, it brings your district into a holistic view for the community, and it gives the community confidence that you know where you're going, and they know where you're going, and their kids are in good hands. So that's, I am passionate about this work, and I'm anxious to get started with you all. That's something about my background.
Thank you, Eric. See, I recently retired from superintendent of the Beaverton School District, and since that time, I've been working with Jim on this kind of work. I worked for COSA on a contract basis in the new superintendent mentoring program. So each year, the new superintendents in the state have an opportunity to go through a year-long mentoring program, where they're given a mentor, and then we bring them in for five workshops during the year. And this'll be my third year. And I'm working as a contract consultant for Education Northwest in Portland, and that's a nonprofit that does a lot of work on research, evaluation, and grant applications. I was asked by the state superintendent recently to apply for a position on the Board of Education, State Board of Education. I'll find out whether that goes through in January. And so I'm hoping that's a possibility, because I think this is a really good time to be in a role to help make a difference in state life. But I love your town, love this community. My wife and I come here often to the Oregon Garden, and we just don't ever seem to fatigue a bit. Also, there's some great buys to go there, wonderful opportunities on some of the packages they offer. I think it's a beautiful town with a great tradition, good, strong school district. Both Jim and I knew great of Rosslyn very well, and worked with him closely. So it's an honor to be here with you. I'm going to kick off the very first part of this, speaking about the general kind of things that happen, good and not so good, in this strategic visioning process. And I don't mean to come across as negative. I more want to alert you about what some of the problems are that are so commonly encountered, which added up mean that a little over 80% of all organizations, public and private, that have strategic visioning processes, documents, and plans, are not able to carry out the goals that they've identified. So a little less than 20% are successful, and there's some very specific reasons for that, why they're successful, and why they aren't. The Harvard Business School did a study of this recently. As a result of this information, now in the private sector, one of the key characteristics that CEOs are hired for is their ability to carry out strategic initiatives, because it's so common for it not to be able to be completed and realized. And one of the reasons for that is that the documents become static. They're not a living document, it's not something that is continually looked at and with changing conditions modified, so that the goals that were originally identified still make sense, they're still measurable, they're still able to be accomplished. And in your case, my hope is, early on, with whatever form the document is, and if it's, say, a three-year period, that you have some kind of periodic way to relook at it and make adjustments as necessary. So the first point is, have a living document. And the second is, sad to say, most of these plans and the time put into them and the energy put into them make very little difference in the daily operations of the overall organization, private or public. By and large, the great emphasis is put in on the development, and where the emphasis really needs to be, it's on the implementation. So we have a year of flurry in activity, we get our document in place, we've spent a really great amount of time doing so. But if we measure the amount of time that's actually spent on implementation, especially at the board level, we find that it is nowhere near the amount of time that was put in on the development. Also, when you think about it, the development is the easy part. It's not really very difficult to make plans about anything. What's really difficult is the ability to carry the plans out. And so we'll want to talk to you about monitoring and adjusting and accountability around what is finally decided on. I want to say again, the difficulty is not in creating a plan, although it may seem like it as we're going through it. It's really the execution of the plan, implementing it. That's the hard part, that's where the energy needs to be. A lot of the plans, you might think, well, maybe some of the reasons why 80% of them don't seem to come to fruition might be that they selected the wrong strategies. Strategies just didn't fit, the goals weren't maybe the right goals. But no, it's in the execution of those goals, and again, the implementation. So if there's a weakness, it's usually not what was selected. Almost all of the goals are worthy goals. It's hard to look at any strategic plan or visioning process and say, boy, those things don't make sense. But if we look deeper, and we find where there's cases of failure, it's that next step of taking it from a plan and putting it into practice. In other words, as a board member, when this plan is in place, you should be able to go to different parts of the district and be able to see living evidence of what it is that we're trying to do. And that sometimes is hard to see. Another big issue, and I know that you find that in your board meetings, is we feel as though, for school board members, the most power, the most absolute influence, the greatest thing that you can do as a board member is to be developing policy. And yet, so often, what happens is, we are caught up on more routine, daily kinds of matters that come into our agendas, and also the superintendent and the leadership staff. And so what the point I'm trying to make to you now is, that as these plans come forward, it's really, really hard, and I'm certainly guilty of everything here that I'm mentioning, you know, the negative side or the difficult side. It's so easy for those day-to-day, routine kind of flare-ups to take over the importance of long-term goals that are really gonna make a difference. And there has to be some way of being able to stay on track with the focus. To look at our agendas and our business and say, you know, I realize the greatest power that we have is in policy. Developing the policy, helping to have the goals of the organization carried out. Does this item fit that category? Is this a priority that we should be spending our time on? With the incredible needs that children have in our school system, and the great diversity, and the difficulty that classroom teachers are facing, are these the items that our energy needs to go to? And what I would submit to you is, the answer is yes, if you're carrying out the strategic plan that you're working on. Another area to keep in mind early on as we go into this is, what are we gonna do about the consequences, the accountability measures? We put a plan in place, we say we want to do this, and what are you gonna do as a board if we're not making progress? What is Andy going to do as superintendent? What is the leadership team going to do? There needs to be some consequences for lack of performance. And it doesn't need to be a negative consequence, it may be that we say, let's take, we haven't made any progress in this area in the last 12 months. And we relook at what it is that we decided on, and we may find that that's not a realistic goal. Conditions may have changed, for whatever reason. That's why the living document piece is important, it's a way of having accountability. If your document is static, it's not very much accountability. And also, what do we do if things are really going well? Does it say to us that maybe on certain things we've identified, maybe we were a little lower in our grasp than we should have been? Can we reach a little bit higher? So there needs to be that accountability around, what do we do if we're not making progress? It isn't true here, thank goodness, that one of the biggest problems is the turnover in leadership. Now, Jim, you may have seen something differently than you as well, Andy, but the last research that I looked at on the national level, the average tenure of a superintendent of all sizes of school districts put together is two years and seven months. Well, if you have a five-year strategic plan, and you bring in a new superintendent halfway through, what almost always happens is the old is thrown out. Those goals weren't achieved, and now we bring a whole new set of goals. And, you know, you're into that kind of cycle, very common, especially for the really large districts in the nation, of that constant turnover, and no accomplishment of goals, just a series of new goals coming forward. I'm gonna pause for a second, and to see if you have any questions or comments on anything I've said so far, or any additions by Jim, or Andy, or Eric.
I just want to mention, and kind of agree with Jerry, there's so many districts out there, and so many plans, but not necessarily quality plans, and quite a few districts don't have any plans at all. And you know the old saying, you know, they didn't plan to fail, but they failed to plan. And so planning is important, but Jerry's right. And when I go over the next part of this agenda with you, you're gonna see that we have in mind intense follow-up for how this will work. Because I know, when I was a teacher, somebody'd give me something from the district office, and I'd bring it on the shelf, and I learned pretty quickly that I never even had to look at it, didn't have to even worry about it, because I was never accountable to it. And the same thing as a principal. You learn that things come and go, superintendents come and go, board members come and go, and you do your own thing. But that's not what we want to be a part of, and we're hoping that that's not what you want to be a part of. That you want to be a part of something that's strong, that has clear direction, and has some accountability to it, and everyone knows that, that everyone's accountable. Board members, all staff, community members, students, everyone's accountable as we go through and attempt to accomplish this plan. So I can't emphasize enough what Jerry's saying, that's where the failure happens, is you celebrate, we've got a plan, put it on the shelf, and tie the bow on it, and what shall we do next? Well, one other comment, I guess I'll make, and that is, when I was a principal, I knew that I needed to be in classrooms. I knew that's where I needed to be, if we were gonna change what the students were doing. But I will tell you, if a principal, even subconsciously, decides... There's so many little tiny bits of minutia that you can deal with every single day, and never get to the important stuff. And guess what? Superintendents can do that, board members can do that, whole communities can do that, because you get distracted by all of those little things, and they seem important. You're dealing with them, and the day, the week, the month, the year is gone, but you did all that stuff, and you were busy, and you're tired, and yet, quite frankly, didn't get at the most important thing that you want to get at in your district, which is the growth of those students holistically, and student achievement in particular. So that's what we're about, and I'll let Jerry go on. But I'm passionate about that part, about accountability, and making sure that everyone's working together on this, and it's not put on a shelf and forgotten. And you'll see, we have some ideas for that.
I've got two other areas that I want to mention in the problem part. And the first one is too many goals. There's a Chinese problem that says, if you chase two rabbits, you end up catching neither of them. And I think that in this particular area, so often you'll see a large variety of goals. And when you have many goals, there's not very much accountability, I would say. And in many cases, if even board members or the superintendent doesn't have the list in front of them, they can't recite them all. So too many goals leads to a lack of focus. And in these times of limited funding, I think what we want to aim toward is doing a few things really well. I was very fortunate, I was superintendent of the Redmond School District, and I convinced the school board, along with others, that we should only have one goal. One goal for five years, and it was to increase the reading and writing and math levels of our students up to the state average. And we were down quite a bit, and that was a very worthy, long-term goal. But that was it, that was the total goal, and we had great, great success over time with it. When I see large lists of goals, it reminds me that the accountability is lacking, because if I say there's only one or two things I'm trying to do, it's pretty well-known what those are. The choices, when it comes time to funding, it's pretty easy to say, you know, we have these one or two or three areas. There are many, many areas, that usually doesn't happen, which brings me into the other problem, and that's adequate funding. If we put together a strategic vision for the future, and let's say there's maybe three to five items on... to five items on it, and we don't see as the budget process takes place over the years of time, that the plan is in place, a change in funding, where funding, even when we have restricted funding, is flowing from other areas into our strategic plan goals, then what that says is, yes, we've added a plan, but we're not going to necessarily fund it. And that takes a lot of discipline now, when we're cutting staff and doing a variety of other things. So I think a really good measure of the passion of the district, or the plans that they put together and the goals they say they want to achieve, is to see an actual difference in funding going toward those items. And that is a pretty big problem with the accomplishment of goals. I've just got a few minutes left on this topic, so I'd like to talk about what are the routes for success, those that seem to be in that 20% that do achieve their goals in a timely manner. And the first one is very hard, and we'll struggle with it as we go through it. It is selecting the proper metrics to measure the goals. What we say we want to do, we have to have some measures in place, and these measures need to have some timelines to them, they need to be realistic, there needs to be consequences in place of if we don't, if we're not successful, what do we do about that? And sometimes, a great deal of time is put in on identifying the goals, and very little amount of time in how we're going to measure them. And I would say that of all parts of the process, I particularly have found it the most perplexing. But when it's done right, when the measurements are done right, and those involved in implementing believe those are fair and realistic measures, it really makes a difference. A second area, again, a very difficult one, but an important one, there needs to be some way for every employee in the district to be able to say that they have a part in carrying out some phase at least of the overall plan or direction. And there needs to be not just the school board who owns it, and not just the superintendent, and not just the leadership team, but somehow, we need to make it a way that every employee in the district can feel as though there's a part for them. You know, without ownership, it's very difficult for these things to move forward. What they say is, yeah, the district office wants us to, this came from the school board, I didn't have any input, I don't even know what it says. That's so common. And I think if we want to break the mold and be successful and really take a step up, we need to figure out ways that individuals, the transportation department, the food service department, the maintenance department, there needs to be some ways that they can grasp onto this and feel there's something for them to do, take some creative thinking in We talked about the constant quality and adjusting, that's a very important piece. And I think the last one that I'd like to leave you with is the urgency, a sense of urgency from the school board and from the superintendent, that this is the most important thing we're doing together this year. So what I would say to you is, in the 2013, 2014 school year, based on what we know can happen when these are done right, based on some of the survey information that both Jim and I have had a chance to read, that mentions about the district delving into a stronger vision for the future, I would say of all the work that you're going to do this next year, over the full year, I mean, in one month at one meeting, that this should be seen as the most important thing that you're doing. And there's a second part of that, and that is, it seems to me as though you would not have a school board meeting or a work session, where in some way you weren't getting reports back, asking questions, giving advice and counsel about the plan, so that it's kind of an every-month thing with you. And then finally, I talked to Andy about this a little bit in one of our earlier meetings, there is a education consultant professor, author, writer by the name of Doug Reeves, and he's been heavily involved in education improvement, especially in schools and districts that have not been doing well, have high poverty, diversity, mobility, et cetera. And he said, the last thing as a principal that I could ever do would be to start the school year in front of my staff and say, and by the way, we're implementing a brand-new curriculum this year in reading, and at the same time, say, and we're taking some of these things off your plate, so that you're able to do it. So I talked to Andy about the idea, what would he take off of his plate that he's already doing now, to make room for hopefully the most important work that he's going to do this year? And as a school board, to really get involved in this, to really get in with the creation of it, looking at those metrics, being able to see if the goals are really in line with where the community would like to see the district go in the future, what are you going to stop doing as a result of this, so that you can prioritize your time? I just came from Education Northwest, one of the groups that I work with, meeting with the CEO for lunch today, and I talked to him about this concept. He said, you know, I've been doing that here since I came four years ago. And he said, the thing that I do that makes it work is I monitor that they're not doing the things that either I told them not to do, or that they said they would do in order to move forward, the more important things with higher priority. That's the first time I've heard that. I have heard of people saying, and now we're going to do this, and not talk about taking anything away, because you know, education is an additive business. Really hard for teachers to stop doing anything, really hard for board members to stop, we just take it on. But he said, yes, I do monitor them, and if we've made a decision that they're going to stop doing something, I'm going to measure them, and they're going to know it. And so, I thought that was a very, very strategic way of trying to prioritize the focus. Well, those are some thoughts and ideas. Appreciate the opportunity to offer to you, and I'll jump in here and there where I can. I wish we had a little bit more time to discuss that, but every item on the agenda that we have is kind of a good starting meeting point, so I will take Jim's time. Thank you.
Well, one thing I want you to know for certain is that, yes, we are talking quite a bit today, because we want to give you a flavor of, after looking at your district kind of process, that we are recommending that you put into place to produce that quality plan at the end of this year. But I assure you that it's kind of like, my first administrative position was as a vice-principal for a short period of time, and I arrived in October, and I really didn't know what I was doing. They gave me a desk and a box and a phone, and the phone never rang, and I didn't have anything to do. I went to the principal and I said, you know, about the second day, I said, you know, I would like to have some assignments, or I'm going to start doing, making some projects or something. He said, you know what, Jim? He said, just take advantage of this nice time you have here, because it's going to explode. It was good advice, because it did. The reason I bring that up is, as we go through this process here, you're going to see that we have in mind for the board to be quite immoral, and we're going to have sessions with you that you're going to be the center of attention, where we're really wanting to get some information out of you, and some ideas out of you, and some brainstorming from you, in addition, you know, to the entire community. So I hope that you recognize that, that we want to lay out our plan for you tonight, that there's a whole lot of things we have in mind for you as important. So Jerry talked about, you know, the importance of a plan, and more importantly, the carrying out of that plan, where things can go wrong, where the pitfalls might be, et cetera. What I'd like to show you is, if you're going to launch any sort of a planning process, you've got to plan for the planning. We put together this calendar that I want to go through with you, and then some notes off to the side on the second sheet that I passed out, that you'll see made reference to as we go through. As you can see, starting on that timeline in July, we met with Andy and talked about, you know, this as, you know, a possibility, is there some sort of project here? And this month, you know, you all approved the contract with us, and we're here now, meeting you as a full board and going through this process, and of course, hopefully, you have questions, and we'll certainly modify this if needed, because I want to emphasize a very important point here. Jerry and I both believe this with any project that we do, this is your project, it's not ours. We have some experience in these areas, in putting together these types of plans, but I want you to know that it's yours, and you're the driver. We are going to help you steer, we're going to help you get there, but at any point in time where you say, hold it, I'm not comfortable with that, that's not what I think we ought to be doing, we want to be involved in that discussion, and we would certainly be flexible. Having said that, just as when Jerry was a superintendent, when I was a superintendent, we won't hesitate to tell you that if you talk about going this way, and we think it could be detrimental to go that way, we'll tell you very strongly why, and we won't hesitate. So we're not yes-men here, that's for sure, but we understand it's your district, it's your plan, you're in charge. So at any time, call timeout and say, wait a minute, this is not comfortable. Before the month is out, Jerry and I individually and together intend to review all of the documents that you and the administration identify as key documents of the district. It's very important to understand what those documents are, why they exist, the importance of each one, and whether or not they ought to continue being key documents moving forward is a question that you'll answer going forward also. Next month, it's very, very important that we meet with the board, meet with administrators, and identify who might be focus group participants. And so, on the second sheet that I passed out to you, it says project process descriptions at the top, and identify focus group participants. So we intend to, at any time I say chair or vice-chair or the full board or whatever, they can be interchangeable, the board will, you'll decide how you want to do that. So meet with the chair and vice-chair or the full board, however you want to do that, along with the administrative team, to take a strong look at who might be focus group participants, in both individuals and groups in this district. And the idea here is, if you're going to go forward with a multi-year plan for this school district, who are the players out there that you want to hear from, that can help us start putting together some ideas to bring back to you for your kind of brainstorming sessions? If you can begin to think about that prior to next month, who might be those key folks in the community, being staff and students and community members, whether they have kids in the school or not? Who might those people be who we can sit down, have a conversation with about the future of the Silver Falls school district? That's what we're looking at here, as far as identifying those groups. And so then, we're going to want to notify them, ask them if they're interested. Jerry and I can be pretty persuasive, you know, there's civic duty and all. And we'll want them to be involved, and we'll want to schedule those meetings to take place over October and November. So Jerry and I will commit to the community, and we will meet with each one of those groups. We don't know how many there will be yet, there may be many, but whatever number there is, we'll take care of it, and sit down with those groups and get information from them. By the way, that will mean, in my opinion anyway, also, meeting with each individual board member, and getting ideas from each of you as to where you think this district might be headed, what direction you'd like it to go, what are the key components of that. We also are going to need to develop the focus group questions. And so, we have a process here that we recommend doing that. After we have reviewed those key documents that I've talked about, we'll come up with a draft of key questions, focus group questions, that we think might be helpful in getting information from those folks that you identify. I mentioned here that some questions are going to be designed for groups, some questions will be designed for individuals, some will work with both. But we will want to have both those types of questions. And we will want to then meet with the administrative team and go through those questions with that group, and see what ideas they have, any revisions they want to make to those questions, so that we get their strong input. And then finally, we come to the full board, well, we would like to have those focus group questions approved by the board, that the board understands, those are the questions that we're going to go out and ask of those focus groups. And it's important then, everybody knows what's happening, it's no surprises, there's no secret meetings, nothing like that. We want everything in this entire process always out in the open, strong communication going on, so everyone knows what's happening. Back to the calendar then, in October, we'll begin meeting with those focus groups, gathering the meetings.
Can I interrupt you just?
Yes, sir.
I'm a tiny bit confused.
Okay.
The focus group questions.
Yes.
You described the process real well. The ultimate aim of the questioning, is it more, I guess, an open-ended to try and elicit? Well, tell me, what is it we're trying to elicit exactly?
Sure. You know, you don't know what this blank slate, this strategic plan is eventually going to look like, or this strategic vision and direction, you don't know what it's going to look like. So if this were a focus group here, we'd have a number of questions to ask about, you know, the current curriculum that's in the district, individual schools, talk about those, because we probably do those geographically in the district. We want to know about the facilities, what did the community, what did the staff, what did the board, what do you think about the facilities that you have? What do you think about the academic program as a whole? What do you think about the finances of the district? You know, those kinds of questions will be, and will be more specific than that, because they'll be specific to the district. But we want people to really think about where are the priorities for them as an individual or a group for this district going forward. There could be some things out there that you don't know about, we don't know about, that have been really bugging some key people out there, that there's this particular issue that we want to deal with, maybe it hasn't even shown up in the survey data yet, who knows? We want to take some of that survey information and expound on that with those focus groups, to come back to you with a compilation of data that's to come back to you with a compilation of data that says, here's what this group thinks, here's what this group thinks, here's what this group thinks, here's what these particular individuals think. And then sit down with you and I'll go through the rest of this calendar. But once we have that data, now we have some work to do. Now we can roll up our sleeves and really figure out the kind of direction we want the district to go.
I'd also like to add, there is a good possibility that all of us in this room right now have come up with maybe what the key items are out there. But what we'd be missing is the opportunity for input and ownership. So not only is the product important, and I realize that you've done a very extensive survey that has a lot of that information already, and you have other areas where you gathered it from your last bond election and so forth. But in order for these to not be your plans, that outreach is really important.
Yes. When Jerry mentioned the implementation of the plan, that ownership is the key to the implementation. If folks throughout this community, as close or as far away from the operation of this school district, feel that they had some input into the plan, whether it's indirect or direct, however it was, now they're going to pay more attention, they're going to want that plan to succeed, and they're going to have some ownership over it. So that's the idea is opportunity, but also getting some information that none of us know might come forward that is key to that plan.
It sounds like you're really focusing on what needs to be improved. I think we also need to gather information on what we're doing well.
Yes.
So when we do something for improvement, we don't diminish what we're doing.
That's right. I agree with that and I should have mentioned that. That will definitely be a part of those questions that we ask. Because I'll tell you, for instance, when I was an E S D superintendent, the three questions I asked of every school district superintendent every year was, what are we doing well that I've enhanced? What are we not doing well that we might want to eliminate or improve? And what are the not, we're not doing at all that we need to start new? So I agree, need to bring in all of those kinds of aspects.
Will the focus groups also be, I mean, gathered, will they also be kind of an educational type of thing for those groups? Because, I mean, just for example, we sit in our meetings and hear about, you know, im- 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 implications, implications, sorry, of like the common core standards and things like that. And that drives, you know, some of the decisions we make. Is that also going to be part of saying, this is what some of the things that the challenges that the district has and that we're looking at?
Yeah, it needs to be. And that's why those key documents are important for us to completely understand what's going on in the district now. We know what's going on at the state level and we can bring both of those then into that kind of conversation. So yes, we're hopeful that those groups, you know, are willing to meet with us, you know, for an hour, hour and a half or for more and put the timing to that. By the way, I've always, and I know Jerry agrees with this, we've done this before, if we schedule a focus group and we invited people to come and let's say only one or two people show up, we're going to spend the time with those folks. There's no question about that. Those are the folks that decided to come, those are the folks who want to be involved and we want to hear from them. So we would never cancel any sort of meeting if somebody shows up. We'll follow them, we'll get crowds there. But I just want you to know how important we think that is for the opportunity that Jerry talked about is key.
So just to clarify, I guess, just to sort of follow up with Owen's question, we've done a great deal of work in some areas over time, particularly in the area of facilities and facility needs. And so we're not going to be starting all over. I mean, obviously, we missed the mark with some of that long-term work, at least in my view with the recent results of the bond request. But so it sounds a little bit at first blush like we're going to be starting all over with everything and that's not the case.
It's not the case.
Building on what we had.
And we can bring up facilities. An example would be, we would say in a focus group, the district's facility plan is X, Y, Z. This is what's been carried out, this is what's in the future. How do you respond to that? That kind of thing. So we're not starting over. We don't want people to think the district wants to just start with a blank slate and they start over on everything. That's not the case. There's so many good things happening in the district and so many things that are already planned that are solid and good to go forward. The question is, is where are the priorities? Where are the most important things in the district and to get those in place? Jerry's right when he says if the budget doesn't follow the plan, once you have that plan in place, I'll say it maybe even a little stronger, you either don't care about your plan or you have the wrong plan in place if the resources aren't following. So no, there's no starting over, David, I promise you that. But there will be adjustments. There will be adjustments, I can promise you that too. Once you really hear that strong data and you start focusing in on what you want to accomplish as a district with that laser-like focus, there'll be some changes. I might be down about that. I've never seen a process where there weren't changes.
To move on to another point, board members may be thinking, well, this thing's going to really cost a lot of money, they've got all those powers and so. We want as much of the district staff to do as much as possible. We don't need to be at everything. There's lots of data we compile and he knows that he can call us at any time and there's no charge for that. We want this also to be fiscally hidden for you. So as much as we can farm out the work, have others do the work, which spreads the ownership, that's very good for us. And especially where there's data already there, the idea of piling through that all over again and creating new, I'm glad you brought it up because it will only help us for us to be more efficient in our work if there are things we don't have to do that are already important.
We also shared with Andy some real money-saving ideas that we have. We're, you know, there are some consultants you hire and, you know, they come into town constantly, they're staying in hotels, they're eating, you know, at restaurants. We have some ideas on how we can minimize all of that. So we're going to try to make this the best possible project you can have at the least possible price.
One of the lessons I think we did learn anyways, at least I did, is that the buy-in of ownership, no matter how much effort we put out, and we felt like we put out a pretty good effort, I think we all did, in terms of investing our staff's time and Andy's time and our own time, you know, trying to, you know, doing some focus groups, but similar type of groups, you can't ever do enough of that. You really can't. And also, I think, getting our staff buy-in throughout, you know, from the assistants to the kitchen staff to the teachers and all the way on up, to have those people be out there championing and working towards the goal, that seems to me to be a really a place where we should be focusing a lot of effort.
And it'll help future bond elections if we're able to do that. It really will. They're talking and they're voting.
Yeah. Well, and they're the contact that our parents and other people around the community have.
Sure. And I consider that a positive byproduct of the process. Obviously, the most important thing is accomplishing those goals and getting the students to achieve. But it does help with the entire community's perceptions of the school district if you have a solid plan in place that they were a part of and they know where the district is going. It's really key. I'll try to go through this, I have a few minutes left. In November, we want to complete those meetings, gather that data and bring it to you. And at that same time, we want to review your mission, your vision, your core values. And in December, we want to continue that work. When I say revised as needed, that means if the board feels or we want to recommend to you, but bottom line is when the board feels there are changes need to be made there, then those changes will be made at that time. And we will continually point to the input that we receive from those groups as we're taking steps along the way. By the way, core values, just so you know, there's an organizational development expert that's worked for years in all kinds of land, his core values, whether they're written on a wall, whether they're published, you know, in a newspaper, wherever they are, if they're not really the core values of the organization, they're meaningless. So you got to get at what are your real core values and if they're violated, somebody needs to get angry because that's everything we believe in. How can those be violated by anyone? So that's important for you to remember. In January, really starts to get very exciting and if you think this work is exciting like we do, I think it's exciting. But the idea here is we begin to discuss the ideas for the overarching goals. Jerry mentioned one goal, that's one possibility. I agree, there should be a small number of goals that are, again, overarching and don't confuse goals with tasks and activities. We're talking about overarching goals of the school district that would last for several years. And you don't want to have a whole lot of those where you get lost and it doesn't feel right. So that would be an exciting time. You as board members will be very involved in that process and it'll be a fun, fun brainstorming kind of time where we'll come up with some really, really cool ideas and I think you're going to love that part of it. In February, we will draft those strategic goals and that's the last part of that, the second sheet I handed out to you. I won't read that to you, you can read that later. But the idea is to come up with, I'll say, one to five strategic goals. I think that would be an exciting time for you. March, what it says there is probably one of the most important components of this whole process. If you start reeling off those words and thinking what they mean, specific, measurable, action-oriented, realistic and time-bound strategies that will achieve your mission, your vision and your goals. That's not messing around, folks, that's saying we are going to come up with the staff on identifying what are those strategies that we're going to utilize in the coming year? Not five years of strategies, but one year of strategies based on the overall overarching goals. What are those strategies we're going to use to accomplish our goals? And we're going to then work with the administrative team to identify what those metrics need to be and that's going to be a difficult task for your administrative team. Because for years and years and years, folks in education and outside of education, the private sector everywhere, the first thing people do is come up with goals that there's no possibility you can measure them. And I'm sorry, not goals, metrics, there's no way you can measure them. They sound good, it sounds wonderful, but you want to have objectives with measurable metrics that you can absolutely take a look at, the superintendent can come to the board and give you a report on where we are on our overall goals, objectives and strategies. That's so important. So that time in April, that's why we put that as the only thing in April, is we've got to focus in on that time of what those metrics are going to be. And Jerry and I are going to say over and over and over again, they've got to be measurable. We will meet with the board and administrative team, hopefully together, to develop plans and tasks for 14, 15. Again, there's those same things, specific, measurable and time-bound. That's key because if I'm out there as a community member and you've asked me for help on your plan and you present me a plan with nothing specific for my child for the coming year in 14, 15, I got a problem with your plan. So the idea here is at that time for you to present out to the community, and I'll mention what step I'd like you to take there if possible. If you want to present out to them, then not only is this our long-term plan, but this is what we want to do this coming year to really have laser-like focus and get at this. It's the most important thing we're going to be doing. In May, I would like you to bring together a key communicator group from this community and bring all of that to them and go over it with them in detail and get their input on it one last time, one last check, if you will, before you bring it back to the board for a first reading, which would be that Silver Falls School District strategic vision direction. That will be exciting time coming into the board as a first reading. I assure you, every single person in this community will have heard about this process, will know what's going on by the time that comes to a first reading and will have had an opportunity to participate in some fashion. And the idea, the goal here is that you adopt a plan at your June meeting and it's then presented out there far and wide to the community and becomes an integral part of what's going forward in this school district with accountability. Any questions, more questions on that process? I can tell you, that process will result in outstanding plan for you, I can guarantee you that.
We've come to a part that you're going to take over from me now. I'm going to give you two questions and I want you to work individually on your answers to the two questions and then we'll ask each one of you to give us your input. And this is, this is really to educate Jim and myself, where you are right now. It's a kind of a scratch of the surface of starting to identify things of importance. And for an individual board member, I think the answers can be very different based on your perspective and the time that you've been in the community, on the board and maybe in the community. It's a question that I used when I was interviewing for the superintendent position in the last district I worked for. The board said on your final interview, you will have an opportunity to ask us questions. Just want to let you know in advance. And I started thinking about that and I thought, what could inform me most from an individual board member of a question that I'd asked? And the question I came up with is one I want to ask you now. For your time on the board, what is the one thing that you were a part of that you're most proud of? So when you think back on your time on the board and all that occurred, what one thing would you pick out of that timeframe that you personally, as a board member, are most proud of? And I'm going to give you the second question as well and then give you a little bit of time. I really find that writing helps the thinking process, so that's why I'm asking you to write the answers down so that you know the first question. The second question is, what one thing do you feel is the biggest challenge for the school district between now and the next three years? The biggest challenge that the Silver Falls School District will face between now and the next three years? And then we're going to start with Owen and we'll work our way through on the first question till we get to Julie. Julie will answer both questions and then we'll start back down the other side. Going to give you about five minutes and then we'll get started. Any questions or my two questions for you?
So the first question is the one thing that during our service, we are most proud of that we were involved in.
Yeah. Your entire 10-year on the board.
There's so many things and it's been such a long time.
Fourteen years, guy?
Yeah.
Fourteen years.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got, I'm sorry, I'm only giving you five minutes to get down. This will be interesting for us.
Very interesting.
And a good, kind of scratching the surface of priorities and interests. Might be even important for Andy, although he probably couldn't predict some of these things, I'm sure. although he probably couldn't predict some of these things, I'm sure. We are looking at the one thing from your tenure on the board that you are most proud of as a board member.
Well, that was a very difficult question.
It is a tough question.
And I wish, like David, that I had a long list of accomplishments or things that I was most proud of. I haven't been on the board all that long. But I have to say that I was really proud of the effort and what I thought was a good, a good process towards the facilities planning. I thought that that, we did it, you know, despite the outcome, I thought that we did a good job there. We put in, and despite differences of opinion and differences in the community, I thought that that was well done.
In our reading of the survey results, I thought that it came up often. That people did see the planning and the effort toward that. Of course, there were some people on the other side. But, you know, I thought that it came through to me. That it was appreciated and well done. Okay, thank you for that contribution, Tom.
Yeah. I guess almost probably, I guess I'm the, if I'm playing it right, since unification, I'm the first one from my local area that's been on the school. And unless I, you know, misunderstand that and my history on that. And it's just been good to be able to bring some issues that I think were overlooked about the area to bring that to the board attention. I think we're, I think I was effective in that.
I would guess that the people that you represent feel very good about your participation in that regard. Good, thank you.
I think linking local control at the side level in terms of operational budgets and the control of their individual programs at the schools.
So, it's both budget and school governance, so to speak?
Programs.
Yeah, programs. That's a big one. And the local control issue did come up several times in the survey as well. Now, that's an important piece in the community. Wasn't it, you were ten or eleven separate school districts in the early 90s?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the point I joined the board.
Big item. Okay, Tim, we're on to your motion.
One of my goals when I came on to the board was to work on building relationships with staff. And I kind of feel like that's one thing I've been able to accomplish. And I think that's been a real, I think that's always a real helpful thing, to get buy-in from people. Because if they know, if they know who you are and know what's going on, they're more likely to, even if they don't agree with the decisions you make, sometimes they're more likely to buy in and accept those.
Right.
I just kind of, that's one thing I've been...
And isn't it true that you do a number of school visits?
I try to.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Boy, the board chair to do that is really a very positive thing for the board as a whole. And I think this thing that we're putting together, it's about relationships with the school district and the entire community and the staff as much as it is accomplishing goals. So, that's a really neat step. David?
Well, I think there are lots of things that I'm very proud of. And this has been a really good board to work with. It's been very, we've had great continuity. We've had very good people. We haven't had deep divisions. But I think the one individual thing, I guess, that I would feel very proud of is the school's climate initiative, which is something that I actually worked on at Monmouth ESD when I served there concurrently with my service on this board. It's not something that came up in the surveys, but it's something that's kind of neat because it's become very institutionalized.
Yeah, part of the culture.
Yes, exactly. And we hear reports on it on a regular basis from the individual schools. And it's just neat to look back on this after all these years and see the way it's grown and the difference that it's made in behavior, citizenship, discipline, referrals, all of these different things. Relationships with the local communities surrounding our outline schools in particular, those kinds of things. Differences in the culture at the high school. It's been a very quiet, but very pervasive positive thing. So...
Great contribution.
Feels good.
Okay, Julie, you're up next.
I would say, the communication and being a representative of the community, the process of going through the bond and the process of hiring a superintendent, you know, to actually listen to when people were speaking and bringing some of their concerns and stuff to the board. This thing, that is a huge thing, that you just open yourself up to really listen to what people have to say and then represent the people that you're here for.
Yeah. Okay, that's representative democratic governance.
And it's the communication level, you know, to keep it open.
Yeah. Thank you, that's a really powerful one. Herb, we'd like your success, please.
Well, from what I can hear, it looks like you've got a camera on my pad. No, there's, that's the same thing. I feel like I've been a good listening post to the community during the bond and before the bond on different issues that people would not feel comfortable coming to a board meeting. But if they see you in town or somewhere, they're willing to open up. And I guess, it's, 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 it's like I've done a pretty good job with that.
Okay, that is, you know, there is quite a, there's quite a trend on this board about that community interface. I think that is certainly coming forward as one of the strongest positive feelings. Can you lead us off, can you lead us off right now on what you would say you see as the single biggest challenge between now and the next three years for the school district as a whole?
Yeah. I think our biggest challenge at this point is what to do with Eugene. And another three for years that rehash and rehash while we've already mashed out. I think it's critical that we move forward. And, but to be able to get the public to buy off on something like that, for them to understand how critical an issue the safety is for Eugene Field and for all the students and teachers that are there.
That was certainly mentioned in the survey by a number of people. Big, big item. Thank you very much for that contribution. Julie, we're back to you again.
Kind of piggybacking on that, communication with the community is probably the biggest challenge to be representing of what is wanted and needed in the schools and getting the accurate information out to the public. And I think that was another reason the bond didn't go. There was just not quite as much as what we needed. So, both, yeah. I think that's really important, how that communication and to be very clear and very directive on what we need to do.
Thank you very much. David, that's...
We're going to start to see some consistency here.
Yes, we are.
I just wrote that finding that elusive community consensus with respect to our facilities needs, which are very large.
Yeah. By the way, that survey for people like Jim and myself that come to you now is really valuable work. And there's a lot on that that we can use in this process. But it's all already been done. So, we really appreciate it and will play on your lines with it. Tim, back to you.
Kind of broad in general, but my, I think, one of the, I think one of the biggest challenges we face is with the increased standards coming down and the increased things that the kids have to learn at much younger ages. Finding the way to best, to best meet that for the kids and for the, giving the teachers what they need to get the kids where they need to be. And that, you know, goes around technology and facilities. And we have huge technology needs and huge facility needs. So, it all relates, to me, to student learning and the best way to accomplish getting what we need for the kids to be successful.
And goes hand in hand with that strong communication.
Very much, yeah, because you have got that buy-in.
There's already school districts in Oregon that started on, down the road with the Common Core implemented and the new tests already being utilized as a pilot. And the communication with the community is so essential for what's going to happen to the baseline there. So, that's a huge issue.
To get them to understand, you know, before you have a dropout rate or, you know, immensely lower grades.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you very much for that contribution. Wally?
Yeah, let me read the one. This is going to be kind of long-winded. Like, I think if you just look at three years, and our, our biggest challenge is driving the higher-level construction and the opportunities, particularly around math and science. Particularly to our middle-school age children. And then driving that on through the high school level. And then at our high school level, also providing some occupational opportunities of what can you do beyond, besides college? We need to have these kids meet our standards, very high standards that are coming. But at the same time, we're going to need to recognize that all the kids aren't going to go to college and we need to have quite opportunities to do that as well.
That's going to be one of the greatest challenges for the state as a whole. When you talk about 40, 40, 20, and less than 25% of the adult population in Oregon now are absentee, we better ramp up on career and technical education in a big way in this state if we're going to come close to accomplishing that statewide goal by 2025.
Okay, I put down just unification, which, finishing unification. I think we're still kind of, I've heard this term bandied around, where are we, a school district or a district of schools?
Yeah.
I think we're still a bit of a, I think we're still kind of operating as a district of schools. And we need to unify, so we all feel like we're in this together. I think that's kind of was a lot to do with the bond. It was hard for people to vote for a new building for those guys when we're still having an old building and we're bonded in our capacity. Our bond, bond capacity is tied up for the next 20 or so years, you know? So, it was kind of, it was, it was hard to feel like we're all, we need to get to where we're all in this together.
And, you know, when you try to bring 10 or 11 entities that had their own governance and their own community and geographic isolation to some degree to the, say, district office, that, that particular item may cast a shadow over everything here. And sometimes, when things like this are not worked through, the other things can't happen. So, I think that is a very, very big item. And I'm sure, as we work with folks out in the field, we'll hear that.
Any, any maybe advice or tire examples for Oregon? Because a lot of the unification was at the same time. The district should maybe be farther along in that process than we are. I think it'd be helpful. Or maybe, maybe they're also struggling with it, I don't know.
Yeah, well, they're struggling. I had the pleasure of working in my career of being involved in the virtue of board organizations. And, you know, it was difficult. We got it through, but there were hard feelings. And there's ways that you can work through that to, to kind of soften that over time. But it takes time.
Yeah.
And it takes good strategies in place to do that.
Yeah, people, everybody, everybody I ran into, you know, in the whole district, from one end to the other, they all love their local schools and their areas. And it's a, it's a feature, but it's also a bug. So, you got to be, you got to...
That's right, that's right.
Jim, the reason I chuckled for just a minute when you were laughing was because I thought you were going to say, you had to try to get 21 superintendents to be in the ESD that went all the way from Beaverton to Seaside.
We had, you know, 40-some thousand kids to 200 kids and everything in between. But we wound up working as a good group and accomplished a lot of things. But, yeah, those, those kinds of things are challenges. Those are similar kinds of things. But you've got to be, have some sensitivity to all of the thought processes going on in the areas, as you know. There's thought processes on the opposite ends of the spectrum. But you've, somehow you've got to bring those folks together.
Owen, we need to have the last word before we get to have dinner, so it's...
Okay, I'll keep it short. I initially thought, my initial thought was facilities. And then my thought was community relationship and communication. And then I thought about Jerry's concept of one goal. And I think where I landed was that those things were probably below the one goal, which I think Wally stated pretty well, in my opinion. The educational standards and our challenges for 40, 40, 20, and ultimately getting our kids where they need to be there. And so, I guess that's, that's where I land. And I think that those facilities are a major component as is implementation on a lot of levels. And all of that takes that community component as well.
Well, great work for not, you know, thinking about this a whole lot prior to, I just introduced it to you 20 minutes ago. I learned a great deal. And I saw some good passion there, which we like to see. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
And I'm going to turn it over to Eric. Eric tells me we have food, but I don't see it.
It might be easier to line it up there. Or did Denise have another plan?
No, no, Denise said just put it out over there.
So, take a break and walk away from there, then when you come back.
It's not a real long break, but this is a working day.
So, we, Jerry mentioned, you know, we both have other positions. It was a whole time. I did mention that I'm the executive director of the statewide ESD organization. So, I travel all over the state and work on those ESDs. But we're going to put those dates on our calendar and keep them sacred. And so, we can coincide with your, with your calendar. Okay.
So, like in our work sessions, this would be a topic that maybe like every work session amongst the other, you know, other things we have.
That's our goal.
Kind of sounds like it's all the stuff that we've been talking about. It's a little bit more...
Yeah, it all, a little more focused. It all relates to a lot of stuff we've been working on.
When do we discuss what we want to take off our tables?
It's a good idea going into this process if we really want to do it well and have a meaningful that we consider that.
It is, because if you don't, what's going to happen is the possibility of this being put off to the side. And it just won't work that way. If this is really going to happen, it's got to be up front and center all the way through. And so, early on here, the board has to decide whether you are ready to make this commitment this, this year to make this your number one priority moving forward and get this done. And there's no right or wrong answer to that. It's just a matter of whether you're ready to do that.
One of the agenda items tonight is 2013-14 draft board goal development. And I think just that, Owen, would be a good topic for the six of, for seven of you to have. About, you know, if you're going to be meaningful and as Jerry and Jim are saying, very purposeful about this agenda, that this, this would be one of the primary goals for the year. And maybe even limited your annual goal to one or two. You historically had four, even five, goals in the past. And I would encourage you to consider this just being the primary one. If it's a secondary goal, then maybe worth consideration. But by no means should we, in my mind, should the board be considering four and five goals again with this on your plate and in your, in your vision.
I was even thinking about our normal, just our normal operations of our board meetings and our typical agendas. I didn't, I don't have much experience in, in school boards. This is really yet. But I would, and I don't see a lot of fluff in our agenda that, you know, you'd want to cut out. But it'd be interesting to hear from some other folks that do have a lot of experience, if they think that we're doing some things that maybe should be on lower priority, maybe we shouldn't do them. Maybe, I don't know, I don't know what you'd see if you just took a 10-minute look at what we're going to do.
Well, I can give you an example that I've encouraged others to do when you go through this kind of process. If, and I say if because not all of ours do, but if your board and your administration spends a lot of time on policy development and reviewing policies and approving policies, you know, that's something other than the ones that are required by law that you get into play. you get into place, which don't require a lot of thought on your part, because the statute says you will and so you shall. And OSBA certainly provides guidance there. But other than that, my advice would be to put policy off to the side until you're done with this, with this project, because a full lot of policy decisions that you would make ought to depend on the strategic plan that you have in place. And, and so that's one thing that you could say as a board, we can put off on the shelf for a while. You know, there's, there's, if you look at the kinds of things that you've done over the previous years, I know, I'm sure Andy does this, you know, when, when I would put together a kind of a draft board agenda for my chair and vice chair to look at, it, now is the time to be looking at those past agendas and saying, okay, those things that we have done in the past and we would be doing right now, we would be moving forward. Maybe that's a list that can be made of things that the board can say, okay, this year, we're not gonna force in on that particular item. These though, we gotta do, you know, we have to. But that kind of thing is how you can lessen your load as a whole board and make this your top priority.
And also using the consent agenda more.
Yes.
Where an individual board member could say, I, sorry, I want this to have a full discussion and could take a, a consent agenda. But maybe more items could be put on the consent agenda with good background materials and there would be an opportunity still to take action and know about, but not necessarily overall discussion.
So much of the stuff we've talked, we've been talking about the last year, you know, related to facilities and things, ties into all this anyway.
That's right.
And I think with the outcome of the bond elections and things, we, we realize that we need to, you know, just drill down more on some of this stuff and get into more specifics and more, more communication with the, with the community to find out what they will support. And so, I don't, I don't, I mean, this definitely adds, adds a fair amount to our play, but the way it ties in with a lot of the stuff we've been, we've been working on and that kind of goals we've been, been kind of working on anyway, or, you know, looking for some answers. And, I mean, I can see us having longer work session meetings, but I think I sort of feel in the long run, it will decrease the amount of work that we're gonna actually have to do, giving us some consistency.
And focus.
Focus.
Focus on one.
That's exactly.
I think we, you know, become so diffused and so spontaneous sometimes that it's just, we're just mired down.
The other thing for you is the things that you wind up doing in the future, it will make for a much stronger implementation. And, and that, you'll find out that that will happen. When you follow a plan, the implementation becomes much stronger and takes so much, so much better in, with, with staff, students, community.
There's a lot to be said about integration of the work so that there aren't separate pieces that are unrelated. I just finished a book called On China by Tishinger. And he said that in working with China, Chinese politicians over the year, one of the things, years, he found is you couldn't take any one single thing and get a decision made, because in the Chinese culture historically, things have to fit into patterns. There isn't something like, for example, Taiwan. We kept trying to get decisions on Taiwan and they kept bringing Taiwan forward with a package of other related items. So as you look at the strategic vision direction in your board meetings and work sessions, probably it should be a part of the whole and that the other items would relate to it, so that there aren't separate things that have no relationship to the vision that you want for the district between now and say the next three years. That, that's a way of, I think, prioritizing and at the same time being able to make decisions based on what the most important things are. And it's not what we typically do.
So going through this process, I'd like, do you wanna just do one more little written exercise? So you give you a chance to eat also. But you have us coming forward. You've met us, we described the kind of process that we think we want to take you through. But what is it that you really want? What is it that the, at the end of the day, that you're looking for? That you will spend this money, you will spend your time, you would, you would ask your community to spend its time? That's a lot of time and resources that you're, you're saying we're gonna spend. What is it, at the end of the day, that you want out of this? Other than just saying, I want one. Really interested to know, what is gonna make you happier at the end of the day, when this is in place and let's, let's say three or four years from now? What's happened in this district that's different than now, where you're gonna say that was a wise investment? That's what I'm looking for right now. Take some time to think about that and write that down, please. Erv, did you hear that?
I think I heard most of it. I didn't get the first part though.
Oh, now I remember the first part. Now, the idea is that after you agree that you wanna spend all this time and resources, it'll, it'll be significant with the amount of time community members will spend, staff members will spend, you will spend, in addition to dollars you'll spend, why are you doing that? What is it, in other words, three or four, five years from now, when you look back, that would make you say, yes, that was a wise investment? What is it that, that you got done? Not specific, you know, goals or anything like that, but what is it that, that was accomplished that you say, yep, that was money well spent? What's that, what's that end product? What is the, what is the community look, how's the community look different? How's the district look different? How does it feel different? How does the board operate differently? You know, those kinds of things. What is it that you're looking for specifically in this end result?
Okay.
Sure has.
Is this from City Fire or? Ty dish.
Ty dish.
Ty dish has helped us settle, settle a number of contracts. On the right to settle, we're bringing Ty dish and we.
That's right, we do see.
It's a direct relationship.
So, Owen, are you ready?
I am.
Okay, let's start with you.
It's not gonna be very measurable.
That's okay.
But.
For now.
For now. Excuse me. I think what I want to see out of this product, process ultimately is to be, to move us a lot faster, farther down the road, so to speak. You know, we've got, right now, plans in place and we've got some implementation, but I think that more laser focus towards those, better implementation strategies, this process will lead to hopefully a stronger community, school relationship. And ultimately, I'd like to see us to be farther down the line in implementing, in solving those, those problems and goals that we have.
Great. Can I get that? Hey, Tom?
I don't know, I guess the reason, the kind of the, the thing that prompted us here is probably the bond, you know, failing so bad, so we need, we need to process that. Essentially, we need to redesign the school district, sort of have a vision so we can apply. There were so many questions about the bond, is how it, it's gonna affect my school and how it operates and do we need technology in this school or not that school or whatever? We, we need to have a vision and a standard so that as we, as we decide to remodel the school or build a new school or do something, we have our standard that we want to outfit it for. And, and an educational model that we, that we can all agree on. And then when we come to issues, we, we apply, we, we look at our standard, this is what we want, and then we go from there. Because I think we were trying to be too many people happy last time.
Let's see where the, the plan would have the bond as one of the strategies in order to achieve the plan.
Yes.
So that they're not separate from one another, but they coexist, one depends on the other.
Yeah, because we were early, because, because we were, we were starting, as we were talking about the bond, we were still, we were trying to define, we were talking about, well, what do we need as far as science and stuff coming forward and all these new standards coming down the line? Do we need to outfit our buildings with this bond money or not? We were, we were having all sorts of questions. And we just, we kind of just stopped and we just said, man, I gave us a bunch of money, we'll figure it out later. I think, I, I think that's kind of what boiled down to it.
As I was going through the, the survey tool and especially clicking down into the second level of, of data, the question I had in my mind on all of those is, was, which of those would have been answered already if you had this kind of a plan in place? And, and for me, there were a multitude of those in there that, that I think would have supplied some strong information to the community if, if what you're describing were to be in place. But, thank you. Wally?
I think I may have gone down another five or 10,000 feet below that.
No, that's okay.
So, out in the future, what I hope to see would be efficient operation, opportunities for students to learn at a very high level and safe and secure schools.
And at some point, we're gonna define what very high level means, right? Those are all important things and I suspect that all three of those in, in some way will wind up embedded in that plan. They have to be, because they're, they're so important. Tim?
Looking five, five, you know, five years down there, like you said, and looking back to say it was, it was a successful plan.
Right.
It sounds simple, but it all comes down to be increased student success, doing what's best for kids. And that's, I mean, that's why I'm here and that would be the measure for me, is if the kids are, kids are being successful.
I'd love to hear that. If that's, if that's not the case, none of us should be here, right? I love that. David?
Well, I think for me, it's very much like Tom's, a long-range district educational and facilities plan that a clear majority of our patrons can support. Almost from the beginning of the bond effort, we started to hear that. You guys have facilities plans, but you don't have it grounded in an educational plan for a period of years. Some people thought we should have a 20-year plan, since the duration of the bond would be about 20 years, others thought, you know, six, eight, 10, there were all sorts of different things. But the message was the same. You need, you need both. They go hand in hand in the minds of many people in the community.
I really like your sentence, but I didn't copy it down. Could you say it one more time?
A long-range educational and facilities, a long-range district educational and facilities plan that a clear majority of patrons can support.
Right. And that message there, when you read the survey cover to cover, it's embedded in there. It's all through there. And, and something that Tom said and you applied, I think you agree with that. When you try to please everyone, you don't please anyone. And, and that's an important thing for you all to keep in mind is, I remember, you know, things come back to you years ago, but one of the places where I was a principal, I, I came into a, and it was clear there were two or three staff members that were controlling everything. One of the guys, I called Ponzi, and he put his thumb up, or he put his thumb down, and, and I, immediately a few of the staff members said, so, so what do we do now? And I said, I'm gonna introduce you to something called significant consensus. It means we have a significant enough consensus here to move forward with this idea, whether, I didn't say this, but whether that guy has his thumb down or not. And, and when people realize that, you know, they may not get everything they want, but there, there'll be something for them in the, in the plan, they, they begin to accept it, to a greater degree. And that's where that, that the clear majority can support what is that, I think that's the holy grail and that's what we're looking for. Julie?
Well, I would be, I'm just kind of thinking back about what people have said, but specifics on how to communicate, to be able to be, able to talk to the community, inform them really well that there's no confusion where money is going, whether the school is closing, to have that community buy-in, to talk to them about technology and security. You know, what is our definite plan? What, I mean, because people that was continually brought up, well, you guys don't have any specifics, so why would we get behind you just because, you know, they have to learn to trust again and to be part of, be part of the process and to know the information.
You know, whether it's real or perceived, if someone thinks that you don't have specifics and you don't have a plan, that you don't really know where you're going, try to get behind that. And we always hear the joke as leaders, man, it's embarrassing when you go to lead, no one follows. So, the most important thing, right, is to make sure that that group that you're working with, you understand them, they understand you, that yes, you've gotta make some tough decisions along the way. But, you know, I've certainly found over the years that even the most difficult people to deal with, if they really believe they've been heard, not necessarily you agree with them, but they've been heard, it makes a big difference. But sometimes, right, sometimes we write off those, those folks. And I'll tell you right now, some of those people in, in a community, not necessarily yours, but I've seen it in other communities, some of those people that the school district leadership have written off and won't deal with or won't talk to or interact with anymore, those are the people that are out there at the restaurant at 6 o'clock in the morning with a group that they have, and they're, and they're talking about the district and how they're not listening to us, they're not working with us, and that builds and builds and builds. And we know that, you know, for instance, it's, it's the secondary thing for me, but when there's a voting situation of any kind, if there's a question mark and someone's had the votes known. So, it's, it's so important, Julie, I, I agree. And we're going to talk about, through this whole process, the many ways in this day and age that you communicate with your community, so many different ways. And everybody accesses it differently. So you want to get as many avenues of communication out there as you can. Okay, Erv, Erv, Erv gone?
Technology has disrupted us.
Oh, lots of.
Maybe he's, oh, maybe he's back. Erv, you back?
Yeah, sorry, I missed my jetpack battery, but yeah, so I'll plug back in.
All right. Okay, Erv, you're up.
Okay, um, I think that we need to be more progressive and aggressive in thinking outside the normal education thought process, if you will. I think it was mentioned early on, maybe some more vocational, educational opportunities that connects more students than we currently are.
So, so really thinking about what are those, what students out there we, we may not be connecting with and how can we, differently than we thought in the past, to bring those students in and have them really connected with the program? and have them really connected with the program to be successful, right?
I think you lost him again.
It's good for, it sounds like he's underwater.
At least we got his contribution.
That's right. That's right. Well, we're at the point now, Andy, where we talked about next steps going forward. We presented the kind of thing that, the kind of plan that we think we want to implement with you that we believe will work. And so the important thing is, is that after going through this with you and hearing some of your thoughts, et cetera, we want to make sure that we have direction from the board going forward with especially next month's work, which is identifying focus group participants, developing that schedule, developing the questions, et cetera. That's the next kind of work we want to do and then October, remember being with those groups. So that's the first thing we need is not necessarily, you know, a formal kind of vote. We just need to know that the board wants us to go forward with this work. We're certainly ready to do that if you believe the next steps are the ones that we're identifying up here. There may be other steps that you'd like us to take that we certainly would want to listen to.
I'm in favor. I mean, this is kind of a straw boat, kind of a thing. I mean, I'm in favor of that. Well, I think we need a process. Excuse me, we have all kinds of information. A really kind of a raucous and traumatic experience with the rejection of bond request. And a whole lot of stuff has come out that we didn't realize or think about or understand as much work in planning as we did. All of this is in my view, of course, but I think that this process would really help us to make progress.
Yeah, I think so too. You know, I tried to look for the silver lining in the bond failure, but we probably got some of the best amount of input we've ever had. Right, everybody was talking about it. Now is the time to keep the conversation going.
And you had a fairly high number.
Yeah, very high turnout. For local bond election, I think when there was nothing else on the ballot, I think it was extremely high. So people are interested. I think that's good. They're participating. I think they want to keep talking, so we need to keep going.
You know, just on that thought, I think in a positive way, you're going to have a large number of your community members that are not only going to be surprised that you're going to have more input from them, but I think they're going to want to be part of that process.
Hopefully.
That was one of my questions earlier on, like the focus groups and things. How do you get, how do you guys plan to get people involved in this process? Because, I mean, we had community meetings and for the size of our district, we had 50 or 60 people show up.
We had multiple opportunities.
And, you know, we had a lot of opportunities and people, well, I don't know anything about it. I don't know what's going on. So, I mean, how do you get past that?
If I were designing this alone, and maybe some of you agree with this, I know, but I've used this kind of model in the past, you do a two-pronged kind of thing. We mentioned that we want to sit down with your administrators. We want to get information from you. Who are those people out there that we ought to be talking to? And we want to specifically invite them to come. When people are invited specifically, not through email, but you call them up and you talk to them and you invite them to come, that exponentially increases the odds of them coming to this focus group. Secondly, to get massive kind of opportunity out there, not necessarily massive participation. We hope they agree with this, but I know that I'd be in favor of dividing your district up into natural kind of portions and say, we're going to have this particular date and time, this area of the community, here's where it's going to be at this school or wherever. Everyone's invited to come and participate. So that way you have very targeted groups that you want to have come and hear from. And then you equip it up to whoever else wants to come to those kinds of open focus groups.
I think that we may not get huge numbers, but what we're trying to get is really good representation of different interest groups. And as Jim said.
There, Andy.
I think we've got you back.
Sorry about that.
Kind of like maybe an excavator cut the line between here and North Dakota, Erv.
Well, it's the thing I meant here.
So I know it's difficult by telephone now to reach people because cell phone numbers are not known. You can't hit those, they're not published and so forth. But I have found, as Jim said, that if you can ask the person that they would come to the meeting, the opportunities of them being there are much higher. So that might not be huge numbers, but it could mean that we get really meaningful dialogue from a lot of different segments of the community. And then in the last one I was involved with for an entire year, we had an opportunity for people online to register any comments that they wanted. And once a month, we would take all that data, correlate it and present it to the board as we were going through. So it showed a trend line of what the community was thinking. You know, I've had meetings where we've spent lots of time and energy and as Jim said, maybe only one or two people have come. And I think it's the modern lifestyle that unfortunately has come upon us where there's so many issues and items and people are working hard. You know, Joe looks over at his wife, Mary, and he says, Mary, do you want to go to that budget meeting down at the school district tonight? She's probably going to say, or he's going to say no. But at least we can have the opportunity, as Jim said.
That's right.
We don't want people to say we didn't have an opportunity for input. And we can try to get the majority of the interest groups and really get some good data from those people who are willing to come and come.
The other thing about inviting the masses to come out to, you know, various ones, you don't, it minimizes people saying, well, why wasn't I one of those ones that was invited to the targeted group? It minimizes that completely. And especially if you have the online picture of Jerry sitting there. Now it means that every single person in the community have at least two opportunities to be a part of this and then some who were invited could even be involved three different times. So never, no one would be able to say with any truth there that they didn't have the opportunity to be involved in the process. And that's so important.
Well, you know, I think we had all that, except maybe the personal invitation. We had site visits, we had lots.
Well, we had the personal invitation with respect to the facility planning committee, which was a large committee of public participation.
That must be a hard reason, at least why such a large turnout and equal voting, because of the outreach that you had.
There's a lot of chatter out there.
Just enough for confusion is kind of what it's called.
Part of the challenge, I think, was getting accurate information out to the people. Because there was a lot of, with this bond, there was a lot of chatter going on.
There's many rumors you'd hear. You know, we all heard rumors on the street that were completely unfounded.
Yeah. So there was a lot of that and then to get the accurate information out to the people was.
That goes back to your comment. And this is the way to do it, I think. You've got to reach out. You've got to listen. And I think it would be helpful too if you have, you know, a couple of guys that aren't associated at all with anything that's gone on in the past or the present and have a chance to listen to them through an objective lens. And I think people appreciate that and can see it that way.
With the focus groups and you talk about, you know, key people and invited people, is it limited to that or is it something you would like go to each one of our schools and say, we're having this meeting, anybody who can come, come? I mean, that's a lot of different, that's a lot of meetings.
Well, what I was saying is do both.
Do both.
I was saying, I was saying do both. Have your invited people to these particular groups. And by the way, your invited people include your greatest supporters and your greatest critics. You want both there. And when you say, you know, when you had, you know, everybody have an opportunity to come to a meeting and listen or talk or whatever, yeah, you get information, but I think the best information you get is from those key people in the community that you can really have a solid conversation with face-to-face, get information there. Then you can get the other information from those larger types of groups. So, yeah, we want to do both.
When you do those personal invitations, would you have a suggestion in there when you're talking to them that they bring people that they think would be interested? Because then you've got some people rallying for you to bring people. Had that ever been part of it? Or does that get too big or?
I wouldn't want to do that because we're bringing that person for a specific reason, that particular person. And if everybody did that, now you've got a large group that you really can't have the kind of conversation I'm talking about.
But you have turnout.
Well, yes, but those people have an opportunity. And we would say to those people in the smaller groups, please encourage your friends and neighbors and family to come out to, you know, the one that's generalized for everyone. But I really want to have a chance to have an intimate conversation with people in smaller groups to say, you know, what is it about this district you're concerned about? What is it about this district where you've got some real concerns? If you had to describe this district, where you'd like to go, where is that? You know, you can't have that kind of conversation with 100 people or 50 people or 30 people. We just can't do that. You need a smaller group.
How many meetings would this, do you envision us being?
We don't know because we want to sit down, like I say, I'm hoping that in working with Andy, he can get ideas from you about who some of those folks are. And we want to work with the administrative team and see some of those folks. And we're going to ask specific questions about, you know, communities are unique, but there's a lot of commonalities. We will ask about specific types of people in the community, who are those? And how do we get ahold of them? What's the contact information? And or have someone in your office contact them. But to me, what we want is once those people have been identified, what you want to say, and it'll go a long way towards getting them there. The board and the superintendent want to invite you to come out to this particular session. We need you. We're coming to, you know, a number of groups and we want you to be in this group. It's flattering when a person's invited to do that. And it's a lot more difficult than sitting in the room and saying, hey, you want to go to that meeting? If you're right, here are the answers. Here's a no. What I have found, when a person is aggressively invited, they usually don't say no. They usually come.
Yeah, they'll say yes and then they'll show because you're expected to.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
And the number of groups really depends on you. I mean, you know, we need senior citizens and Hispanic community and people who are business owners and all of those different kinds. You know, you know the community well. You know what the groups are. You shouldn't leave any certain interest group out of. There's some real traditional ones, but I think that's a good exercise for you and Andy and the staff to determine what the different interest groups are and then if you know who within those will be representative. I think groups of 12 and below are about what we're thinking. And I would also say none of these meetings are things that we wouldn't want you to drop by to if you wanted to. Certainly, maybe sitting in the background of a certain interest group that you'd like to hear from could be instructive for you. So we wouldn't see that they're closed to Andy or the administration or the people as well.
And if that happens, I'd be involved in those and I encourage board members to do that same kind of thing with a couple of stipulations. One is, is that if you're there, we wouldn't introduce you because you don't want to be back in the shadows and they say, well, there was that board member. We want to introduce you. And then hopefully you will not be very participatory. We want to hear from those folks, not necessarily you at that point. You may get asked questions. Of course, you want to be responsive. But the idea is we would introduce you as a board member who's come here to listen tonight to what the community has to say.
I think you can add on there, we don't expect any participation.
Yeah, that's right.
Because I've been in those situations, they don't turn around looking. I mean.
Yeah, I agree. We would say that we don't expect any participation. Board members have plenty of opportunities to participate, we would say.
So you want, you want to see groups of interest groups?
Yeah.
You want to see, you know, no on the bond groups, yes on the bond groups. Like to see a group field.
And what Jerry and I will do is we will put together a draft kind of examples of the kinds of groups that we might be looking for. And we, there's no way that we can come up with the correct list because you know your community way better than we do. So then we want you to either delete some of those, add to those as a board and then the administrative team. And then if that can come back to us, then we can start putting those groups together.
And also your input on what key questions should be asked.
So we'll ask the key questions.
I want to, I spoke with the two of you about this and you've referred to it a number of times tonight and that's related to the engagement process that we did in the post-bond. And we actually had the consultant from ThoughtStream at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, and gave some very helpful information. I want to only mention that because I believe it's a tool that could and should be used as part of this process. And part of that is the fact that they, we have an additional opportunity to use them that came with the purchase of the survey or of the engagement process. So that's out there sitting there for us. But really, I don't want necessarily to give it a promo, but I do believe there's an opportunity for us to use that here. But what I do want to comment on is related to your comment about the, Jerry, about the attractiveness of the internet use. And we sent out very few invitations with this engagement process, but got the word out and had nearly 200 respondents and then allowed for some very specific and, I think, articulate comments that in many ways were similar to what you would have in a personal engagement. You don't have the opportunity to interact. That's the missing element, of course. But it's 2013 and I do believe there is an opportunity for a tool like that to be used, sending out a specific invitation. And keep in mind, we do have access to emails of all parents within the school district. We're active with business owners, Chamber of Commerce. We have actually access to quite a few emails and can probably replicate an invitation that is pleasing to folks that they can take in an hour, 30 minutes in the comfort of their own home. And I believe it gains some very similar information. So what that looks like in all of this, I guess I'm not quite certain because I think the focus groups are critical and will provide some very helpful information. But it's a tool that I think can, we can access, in some cases, hundreds of more people that otherwise we may not have been able to.
Yes, that's right. I agree. It's a really good opportunity for someone who doesn't physically want to come to a range, but has some business to offer.
Well, that's the end of what we planned on sharing with you this evening.
I guess I got one question. I know we're going to be asked at some point. This is all valuable, but what's the cost rate we're looking at?
We didn't, you saw our contract, right, that we put in front of you. We haven't sat down and had that exercise of what we think the end cost will be. We can do that for you. We can try to come up with an estimate. We don't know though because of, you can't predict what's going to happen.
I think it'd be helpful if you came up with a range because I'm sure it'll be asked.
Sure, we can do that.
I agree.
Yeah, it can be a big range.
We'll do that, okay.
I thought you'd be doing a pro bono. You're such nice guys.
There we go. Well, it will be a very large range. It'll be pro bono to. We can do that. I think that's good.
It depends how many meetings we ask for you guys to have.
We'll just estimate that.
You also may want to talk with Andy and maybe there's a bottom line to queue out. You also may want to talk with Andy and maybe there's a bottom line to queue out that would be instructive for us to say, you know, I can go along with this process, but it starts getting up in this range, you know. So it can flow both ways.
Yeah.
Well, my sense is, is that, maybe this isn't sense, but the thought is, is that it's not going to be a very helpful process if we put too small of a limit on it. Because, you know, the more meetings we have, that means that we're being, in a way, means we're being successful in getting that communication to happen with the community. I mean, that's, and so it's, of course, it's going to be more expensive from that standpoint. And the more buy-in we can get, the more participation, that's going to increase the cost, I guess, in terms of your guys' hours and time. So I see that as potentially a good, a good thing.
And I mentioned that, you know, we have tried to take some measures and we've attempted this to mitigate the costs. And just a couple of those I'll mention. My wife's parents live nearby here. I will never need a hotel room. Jerry will almost in a while, but I won't because I'll utilize that. If Jerry feels comfortable staying with my wife's parents, which I wouldn't ask him to do. Also, also, I work a whole lot with folks in Salem. And if I'm, I will try to schedule meetings when I need to be in Salem attached to this kind of work, so then you're not having to pay for my mileage. So those kinds of ideas are how we're going to try to keep the cost down. One other thing I want you to know, I think we told Andy at the time, we dropped our rate that we normally charge for this project because it's going to be so much longer than some of the other ones that we do. And we wanted you to, you know, have a volume rate, if you will. So we do want to keep those costs down for you. At the same time, you want to have a quality product. So we'll come up with an estimate for you. Okay? Or we can, or we can like say, yeah.
Any questions? Good.
Okay, so we're going to take that as we're going to start moving forward. Okay?
I would have since.
Yes, all right.
Herb?
All right, good.
I'm going to say goodbye. I'm going to head over to the house before it gets too dark. I live in the north part of Van Nuys and I think I can get probably to sublight before it starts. So I look forward to seeing you again. And of course, Andy and Jim and I are constantly communicating and it'll be good for the three of us to talk after this move. Jim is going to stay. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jerry. Have a nice drive home.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. This was really helpful and very informative.
We're really looking forward to rolling partially using new resources.
Exciting. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our other discussion items. Review of board superintendent working agreement. We have all this in our packet. It's one we have for a few years now. Any discussion on this? Any thoughts? Does it look okay to everybody? Something to continue on with or?
Jim, it may, it may be helpful to ask the board to, to take a look at the categories that we have in place and maybe review each category and see if there's something that they would like to have considered or modify or remove.
Okay.
And I do, I didn't have them prepared in advance for this draft, but I do have a few that I'd like to bounce off of just for consideration, at least for discussion.
Yeah, chime in anywhere. Governance policies, principles. Anybody have anything on this one? Hey, Andy, just jump in wherever you need to.
Sure, keep back.
Meeting operational agreements. Anybody have anything on that part?
Back to governance principles, Tim. I'm curious if the board feels comfortable, especially related to the specificity of number two. And while I think that you understand that, I just want to be certain that, you know, if there is ever a distinction that needs to be made about what, what my role or Eric's role or staff member's role is administrator specifically as compared to your role in the day-to-day operations, that that, that be sorted out or at least have a principle to help best address that. Does this provide the specificity that, that you need? And I believe you're a very good board when it comes to referring things to me, when it comes to operational needs, or I guess as we're talking about governance here specifically. But in distinguishing what is specific to the superintendent's role as compared to the board role, is, is there any distinction that needs to be refined in that arena? Are you comfortable with?
I'm comfortable with it. Is there anything you'd see?
What are you hinting at?
What's that, Julie?
I said, what are you hinting at?
Well, no, I'm actually not, not hinting at anything. I just, especially as we move ahead and, you know, and as I think David alluded to, we had some, a few hot button topics that we had to address last year. And just being certain that you're comfortable in everything from the process of chain of command and what that looks like and that I'm responding appropriately to the needs that you hear and referring to the correct person or that those topics are being brought to your attention that you feel need to be brought to your attention as well. And so if we're comfortable there, I am, Julie. I just want to be certain that you have the conversation about me.
Everybody okay? Okay. Okay, meeting operational agreements. Nothing? Andy, did you have anything on this one?
I guess maybe Tim and Wally, this is more specific to you. And I heard Jerry and Jim refer to this a little bit tonight. The agendas are crafted, drafted, crafted by me based upon what I believe are the needs of the board at that time, based upon input from the previous meeting. So while we don't have a sit-down of Tim and me sort of crafting the entire agenda, I believe it is a reflection of what the board wants. And Tim has, of course, the opportunity as chair to revise that as appropriate and has on occasion, as has Wally when he's been the chair in the past. The one piece that we don't have though, that I have noticed in other school districts is that prior to the meeting, and all of you know this, that the board chair and I meet the week prior to each meeting, is many school districts have the board and assistant chair meet. And so it's three, you know, two representatives from the board and a meeting with me to, to discuss the agenda, discuss topic, process and so forth. There may be some merit to that, of course, it's coordination of schedules and all of that. But I have heard that many school districts do that and it's a positive, it's a positive response. So Wally, you know, that kind of falls on your shoulders. As your assistant, we could surely do that. And whether it belongs in an operation, or excuse me, a working agreement or not, I, maybe that's worth the discussion, but it has been included in others.
I'm sort of really open to it, but I don't know if it's necessary. I think we have a very efficient agenda and we can go with Tim if he needs one added.
Yeah. Whatever.
And I'm not here to force your hand one way or the other. If you're comfortable with what we have, then that's, that's fine with me.
And that's true if anybody has anything they want to know, you can contact Andy or me. Communication agreements. Anything on this one? I've had this question about number five. What's the kind of parameters there that we're thinking about in terms of limiting your response? I assume this is, this is not talking about board meeting communications, this is talking about communications in the public?
That, that's correct. Owen, and obviously you're speaking as a, well, you're an elected official in that circumstance. You're speaking as a member of the community essentially because you're speaking on that board. And so I think that, that is sort of a cautionary statement as much as anything, understand that the conversation of board members should, should have that lens in place that, you know, rather than specific guide or saying, oh yeah, we're going to get there, we're going to do that, or I'm going to convince the board to do that. I think that's, that's the caution of that statement with me. And then, of course, the employment-related concerns are legally bound. I do have a suggestion though, and I don't, I couldn't find it in here specifically. And it's a good reminder for me, but that is when, when a board member asks me a question, via email or personally, I think it's very helpful for me and actually responsibility of mine to be certain that the rest of you know that that question was asked and here is the answer to that question because you're operating again as a unified board. So if I get a question from a board member, I'd like you to know that that question I'm going to share with the rest of you and, and my response to that, to that question. And I've been providing weekly updates to you, or at least, you know, every other week as I can. I think that's a nice addition to our relationship and I can include those in those updates that I provide to you. But I think, I think that's a reasonable expectation for me to have and something that I'd like to have included in, in the working agreement if acceptable to you.
Sure, because of the general priorities anyway.
It is.
Yeah.
By the way, those weekly updates are great.
Yeah.
Probably for you. I know it's a little bit of a burden for you, but it's very helpful.
It's all about the system. Once you get it established, it works pretty well.
That's right.
But yeah, you're welcome. I, I'm glad I'm doing that.
Back to number five, I'd like to change the word can to should. I don't like the connotation that can has in that sense. If anybody else read it that way. But part of our role as this board is to, is to listen to the community.
Wear your eyes and ears.
Yeah, we'd be, we all would look, I don't, not that, not too many of us say. No, I'm not. I think that's loose the spirit of what that symbol is. And Andy, did you want to add a, a number nine related to questions the board?
Yes, I'll put that in draft form and send it out to you prior to the next meeting.
And then we can approve this in our next.
Yes.
So overall, is this document the one that we've had in place at some time or hasn't been recently reworked?
No, it's essentially the same document with a couple of changes over the last two or three years, David. So it hasn't changed much.
Three years, I think.
It was crafted through templates from OSBA at the time that it was crafted. I also saw input from some other superintendents who had sort of been in the trenches for a while. And so some of the modifications at that time were there. But I, I don't know how common this document is. And speaking with Jerry and Jim, it sounds like there are many school districts where it's not there. And, and so I'm pleased that we have something in place because it is a document that I think at times, especially if there is a, either a difference on the board or a difference between the board and me, or if there are questions of resolution similar to what we're doing with the visioning process, this is a document that we can refer to and ground us in decision-making and.
The reason I ask the question is I, I'm not so familiar with working agreements between the board and, excuse me, full of dust as usual, and the superintendent. But I, you know, at OSBA, for example, we have the board working agreements, which are basically the working agreements between board members about how the board will conduct the business of the association in its governance role. So this is a little bit different, being specific to the superintendent.
Well, David, that's a great comment because really this is, it's kind of, is an agreement amongst the board members. A lot of the, a lot of the provisions anyway are.
Exactly. Yeah. It's just set up a little differently.
I think maybe that just by tweaking the title a little bit, there, agreement amongst the school board. And, you know, you just kind of change the title of the parties, something like that. That's a good idea, covers all both areas. Can you work on the title change, Andy?
So, so Owen, I hear you.
So working agreement amongst the board between certain provisions are between the members of the board, you know, and how we deal with, say, things like division and the one, you know, one of the most important. You know, we're agreeing with each other that we're going to arrive at the meetings, for example, and having read and be prepared, not just agreeing with you. And then, you know, number six, meeting operational agreements, that's a huge one, but making decisions as a whole, recognizing that, not number six. Number seven, support decisions of majority after honoring the right of individual members to express. So those are really, my thinking, those are agreements amongst us about how we're going to behave.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think out loud now maybe what it could be, be a working title. Yeah, between the Silver Falls School District Board.
You could say amongst and between.
Amongst and between.
Something, some kind of language like that.
Yeah. All those are very good points. I mean, I agree because many of these agreements are between each, each of you, aren't they? Okay. Okay. I can craft something. Send it to you, Tim.
Yeah, board friend. And the last topic, annual planning and evaluation. Anybody have anything to add or take away on that? Good?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I'll pick those and give it to you for your September meeting.
School plant, facility planning and funding. Number one, use of Eugene Field School. Andy, do you just want to, you put something?
I put a working document in front of each of you and have provided it for members of the public tonight as well. I'd like to spend a few minutes and go over those with you and then seek your, seek your input related to next steps. And I think it's important that, you know, in light of the conversation that you've had tonight with Jerry and Jim, and I, and I think this is valuable and I think it's smart that your, your facility planning discussion to be, be included in light of your visioning process and your strategic planning that you're carrying out through, through the course of the next nine months or beyond. So with that said, however, I provided you a document called Post-Bond Review and Draft Action Plan for board discussion in early summer. And it was, it was an outline of what I believed, and I think I heard consensus from each of you, to, specific to what, what the next steps should be related to facility planning. And again, what I heard from each of you is that our facility needs are not going away. We've done a reasonable job of defining what they are. And whether they're the reasons for the bond failure and the reasons, or excuse me, the direction that you need to take and we need to take as a district are maybe yet to be determined and refined. The fact remains, we have a variety of facility needs. And so as you go through that, that, that list and the flow chart really, and moving from top to bottom, focusing your attention to the five boxes on the bottom, and there may be others, which is why I put others in the bottom right box. I put what, what I believe were the main elements that were contained within the facility and continue to be contained in the facility plan and were elements of the bond. And at the last meeting, I also put a red box next to continued use of Eugene Field. And that's not a statement of continued use, it's a reference to continued use of Eugene Field. Question mark, period, take your pick. And about what that, about that looks like. And I consider that to be a priority distinction because in my mind, and based upon what I think I've heard from you and what I know I saw on the engagement summary, is that people who voted yes on the bond were, were supportive partially because of the need, they're, they're interested in either getting out of Eugene Field or seeing something done differently due to circumstances around that school. But what I also read within that engagement summary and what I've heard from folks in the community as have you, is even people who voted no, I believe that there's a general sense of concern about Eugene Field. I believe that there's a general sense of concern about Eugene Field. Now, that doesn't mean that those people are necessarily going to have the, the solution to that, but I think what there is agreement on is there is a sense of general concern. That extended into the conversation at the last meeting, where I heard from, from many of you, or from all of you, all right, what does that mean? And where do we go from here with, with, in relation to Eugene Field? Tom, I think you were very thoughtful and specific in your comments to, related to what are the fatal flaws? I mean, what's really, what's wrong with that building? And, and what are some of the elements? And, and not, not necessarily fatal flaws just structurally, but I think fatal flaws globally and generally as a school. At least that's the way I interpreted that, or at least I'd like to influence you to consider it that way. And David, I appreciated your sentiment, specific to sort of through the lens of the new economy, I think was your phrase or something to that effect. And I think that's, I think that's spot on as well. I mean, we, so even with those, those two reasons and the other concerns, maybe a little bit more traditional or what we've heard, like it's a 92-year-old building, and it's, doesn't have the square footage we want, and that it's locked in between two, two lean highways, et cetera, none of those, I think, are to be minimized at all. And so what I, what I've done is, on the second page of, of your document, have crafted for discussion only for the board. This by no means is, is a final document. In fact, I suppose it's more of a upper proposal than anything that I'd like to move ahead with, but I'd like your input in doing so. And that's specific to, all right, let's, let's dig deeper into that building and, and what does, what does that look like? And as you read through these, and I'm going to read them out loud for the sake of the public as well, I'll make a special note to say that the majority of them are not necessarily related to the, the, the specific structural facility, even though a, a couple of them are, there are some others that I think need to be addressed. So, so first and foremost, I believe, at least in my mind, I'm recommending that, that as soon as reasonably possible, that we establish a task force, not a large one, a small one, seven to 10 people, give or take, with the specific goal of identifying the, the, the concerns specific to Eugene Field School.
Don't we already have the information? I don't know. Task force just seems, appeals to me, with the exception of involving more people, that we're just spending more time collecting the information we already have.
And, and maybe so. Wally, let me, let me explain this a little bit more. And, you know, clearly I'll follow the lead of the board on this. But I, but I do know that one, that a couple of things that we haven't done, in my mind, satisfactorily, specific to that building. Yes, we have looked at it structurally, the Skansker report that we did last year. I, I think we can also dig a little, a bit deeper into the structure itself, especially specific to what some of the fatal structural flaws may be. I mean, I, I think it's been a while since somebody poked around the, the footings of the building and maybe tried to put a metric, say, specific to what the level of dry rot is in the building and things of that sort. I think there are still maybe some unknowns about that, simply because we haven't drilled a few holes and done some invasive testing. I think some invasive testing is likely necessary to that old building. Again, I'm, I'm going to follow your lead, but I, but some of the questions that we heard, even though there was general sentiment about getting out of the building, was also specific to what are some of the problems with that old building. And I wasn't able to answer each of those questions, because we haven't dug that deep. But, but I.
Yeah, Andy, I just want to highlight a little bit on the point. When I say fatal flaws, it's, yeah, part of that is structural, but just, you know, the, the other things that just make it, you know, why is this building no good now? Can we, or can we keep it going for 10 or 15 more years? That kind of thing. It's not, as I look out there 20 years down, or I can't see Eugene Field there. It's, it's, it's a bad spot, but can we keep this going for five or 10 years, or 15? Or, and balance that against what are the fatal flaws? You know, location, health, structural?
Are there some positive effective alternatives out there?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think there are, that, that even if we found some, if we drilled some holes and found out dry rot wasn't necessarily as extensive as we think it is, this doesn't mean we shouldn't move out of that building.
While I agree with you, I, I, I think, I think some of those are the answers that I can't provide and we can't provide as a district right now. And.
Then is the task force needed for that, or do we just need to hire a contractor to go out? Just turned off the lights.
I, I think hiring a, a contractor to do a little deeper digging in there is, is warranted. But I don't know, I'm not certain that a contractor can also help define some of the short, in fact, I know a contractor can, some of the short and, and longer range concerns, even if it's 10 years out. What's, what's, what's the limitations related to programming of the building? You have two significant special needs programs in Eugene Field and three classrooms. And, and what's the anticipated growth of that and the impact in the building over the next five to 10 years enrollment? This is an, an interesting, I think, comparison that, that a committee can dig a little deeper into. And that is that, that when you think about the impact on education of, of students that have essentially 90, maybe 95 square feet per student of, of instructional space as compared to most other schools in the district, which have anywhere between, say, 110 and 150 square feet per student, what are the implications of that? And, and are you willing to live with that for the next 10 years while we figure out something else to do? Others, I think, that need to be considered would be, what are some of the other limitations or allowances even in the building, especially limitations that you have? While, while I think we're all aware of it, the, the, there could, you know, be discussions about access to education and, and what the school can't provide currently with its limited parking, with its limited playground, with some safety hazards in the building that we have identified. And what does that mean? The inefficiencies of the building, simply because there are, are, are limited restrooms for students to use and what that impacts on, on the day. I, I just think a little bit deeper digging, committee conversation about that, bringing back to you with maybe even something like Thomas would envision, whether the committee could do it or not, maybe a different story, would be option A, option B, and option C. And, you know, and maybe a, a continuum with, with option A, let's sink another X number of dollars into it and get five or seven more years out of it. Option B being, you know, let's figure out what kind of, what, what we can do to either get out of it or at least make some significant modifications to the building. And option C is get out. And then use those, because again, what I heard from the community is, give me some options, give me some choices, so I better understand what the circumstances are at Eugene Field and have a better feel for what those needs are. And I think if we can get a group, and this is would be a group of balanced-minded people, I don't think people should be on there who have a, a, a purpose of 100% drop everything, you know, we need to get out of there and build a brand-new sparkling school, or nor should we have anybody out there. On the other hand, who, who will say, you know, that school has another 50 years of life left in it, we can make it work. I think you try to find a balance of people who have that, that scrutinizing lens to be able to identify what are the limitations, what are the allowances, and what could it look like for just a few years to as much as 20 or 30 years.
So it sounds like you're looking for a group that's very familiar with that building already and educational needs of students.
Yes. They should have some educational.
So they have some skill set that.
And I think we have people who are on the long-range facility planning committee, Wally, who, who could fit that bill. I, I won't mention any names out loud here, because I haven't asked anybody yet, but I do have two or three, a couple of former educators who, who can see the big picture perspective of Eugene Field. And honestly, I, I think now, especially in, in retrospect with the, with the, with the bond, I think we owe it to the community as well, to be very clear and transparent about some of the concerns are related to Eugene Field School.
Well, I, I agree with everything that you said, Andy. I think that we have to have a, a look at this, an objective, sort of comprehensive revisit of the issues. I think one of the things that I picked up in my experience with the bond, I'm really sorry. It's that season, allergies and dust, but is that there's some distrust about the, the repeated process over time by which we have developed this mindset that we have to get out of Eugene Field no matter what. And it was developed in the minds of some at a time when we had sort of this ever-increasing prosperity and the expectation that if we wanted a brand-new school, we would have a brand-new school, no problem. I think, you know, in my view, once again, things have really changed, and they're likely to stay changed for the long haul in terms of our lifetimes. So I think one of the things we really need to do is have an objective, comprehensive review of Eugene Field. And I think it's really important that we have not the same people that have been on the previous task forces that have basically condemned Eugene Field, but we have new people who take a fresh, objective look at the feasibility of staying in the building. As you said, option A, or, you know, different options, feasibility of retrofitting the building, maybe changing its use a little bit, perhaps modifying attendance boundaries to take some of those students out of Eugene Field if necessary. I mean, I just think that we need to revisit this in a comprehensive way. And I think that's the only thing that's going to quiet the, the crates or lead the district in a new direction with respect to Eugene Field. So that's just my two cents there.
I have that sense, too, that there, that part of the purpose here is to serve as to have a fresh group that is above the appearance of even a reproach, that there's no, you know, they're not in bed with the board or the school district in some way. And I know that if we're inviting people, there's always that, that, you know. But, but anyways, that, I, I see that as being part of the value of this, is if we can get some folks on there that are known in the community as, you know, free thinkers and objective and qualified competent people. And it may be that, that they will advise us that they need some additional information that a contractor could provide, you know, inspection, digging, you know, whatever, as they're going through the historical documents and the things that we've already done. If they then identify, hey, we, we want somebody to come in and do A, B, C tests to, because these are areas of concern, we need more information, I could see it working that way potentially. But I can think of a couple people in the community that are, are, I mean, they're certified building experts. One, two guys are, are guys that have been superintendents for years, companies that build schools and do remodels and things like that, that are, are well-known in the community. So I think, I think we could find those kind of people and that also are, you know, probably wouldn't be seen either as being, you know, people that we're just directing somehow.
And I, I think at the end of the process, process, we, the board, needs to be decisive as we can on a direction. We need to clarify and stick with it and make a decision. That's one of the comments I've heard, is that you guys talk meet talk all the time. They were deciding we need to make a decision and take our lumps and work together.
And Tom, are, do I hear you saying that this is?
Well, but the public didn't, didn't agree with them. You know, I mean, our, our plan is to keep going for five more years, and if we can't get a bond replaced, we're going to modulars and cut funds. You know, that, that's our plan. If we can't get a, I mean, that's, that's what we're going to do, something like that, or 10 years, or 20 years, 50 years, I don't know.
Or we're going to modulars next year.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, make, at the same, make some good.
Yeah. And at the same time, while I think this is probably a good idea, even though we may not necessarily need more information.
I, I don't.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need to drag, I don't think it needs to drag on for months either.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's something we need to, I think we need to decide this year what we're going to do with Eugene Field, because person, I mean, but my personal opinion is we need to get kids out of there. And we need to come up with some other kind of plan, whether we pass a bond or not. We need to figure out how to get kids out of Eugene Field.
I hope we have a plan this, this year.
And so I think this might be a good idea to, you know, increase involvement and get a little more community buy-in. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to see it drag on. I think we need to, I think we need to make a decision.
Yeah.
In the next few months, even.
I agree with that.
As to what to do with Eugene Field and if we're going to stay in it, or if we're going to move modulars somewhere and, you know, kind of temporary fix or whatever. I just think, and I want to, after we get done talking about Eugene Field, there's a couple other things I want to throw out there, because I think there's some things we need to start moving ahead with and find money to do it. So, but that's my thought on Eugene Field. I, I mean, I, I can see the benefits of this, but I don't, I don't want it to drag on for months. I think we need to make some decisions and decide where we're going to go.
Some of the things you talked about makes sense, but lots of around these bullets, I think we already have. But if you're talking program level and some new details.
A lot of people were looking for more specifics why we're opposing Eugene Field. I mean, they know, they know the basics, they, that's out there. But at the same time, you know, a lot of the questions I was hearing is, well, what does it really take to get it up to code, to get it to where it is safe for the kids for earthquakes? You know, what can we do to drop off, whatever, to make it safer? What is, what's really happening here? Are you just throwing it away? And your, and the comment was, you know, you're just moving into the school you just moved out of. So why would you go over there? You know, and so there was some, but they were looking for more specifics, very specifics of, you know, well, why can't you fix it? You just say it's bad. And it is. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, but the specifics of, you know, what does it take to get it to?
Over data.
They are. And whether it's technology or security.
That's what a little bit of, some of this could provide, I think. And they're looking for the source of the, I mean, certain element anyways, looking for the source of the data. And I understand that certain element, I always feel there's a mistrust of the source. But that's why I think, like David said, you know, he's fresh people that can be the source, or that can at least that the material we have and present it is reliable.
That's what I was trying to say in my own wheezy way this evening, is I think that we've never taken a look at, an honest, objective look at, take to fix the building. The mindset has always been, it's an old building, we need a new building. The economy is such that we can afford a new building, so let's just throw that one away. And I, I think that that's really important information to a lot of voters, at least in, once again, my experience.
So, so to supplement that comment, sorry to interrupt you if I did, David. To supplement that comment is, and actually to take it to the next step, is that if, if there were a solution to remediate that building, the, the next step is, the next question, one of them anyway, would, would it hold 500 students? In other words, we have a, we have a school by 2013 standards that has the square footage for about 300 students. So if we were to remediate the building, if we were finding that the best course of action, then I, I think that you as a board have an obligation to ask yourself the question, then what do we do with the other 200 students? Or, or where does that, and, and this group of people could help surely bring that to the surface and, and discuss that with the public as well, because it may not be smart instructional practice to put 500 students back in a school that really should only have 300.
I think they're going to be equipped to, to educate kids the way they need to be educated.
Correct.
So we should look at what the cost of that would be.
The answer to that is yes, that's going to cost money. And to get the, which I agree with Julie was having, it's going to cost some money to get, if you want really concrete data, it's going to cost us money to go get that.
Well, the, you know, the bond went really fast. I mean, we got it out there, put it out there and had a lot of information out there, but it was too quick that people weren't processing. I think if you make, you know, a decision in the next two to three months, I think you're not going to have the population buy in, you know, the community buy in. And that, that is in it, that's what hurt us so bad in the bond, is that we, you know, they didn't feel comfortable. And I think people are pretty comfortable closing Eugene Field to a point, but they need more specifics before they're really behind it.
When you, you look at the voter, the voting group that represents the kids that are in Eugene Field, that group was in favor of the bond. It was really the outlying people that, you know, you, I think unless that building probably is falling down on top of the kids right now, they're probably still going to vote no. I don't know if there's enough information, I guess what I'm saying, about that building to convince somebody out in Clackamas County that voted no to now change their mind and vote yes, if that's the biggest cost, you know, component of the bond.
Because it doesn't affect them.
Because it doesn't affect them. That's why, part of my standard is to go ahead and do this, get more information, you know, to help back up our decisions. But at some point, this board needs to make a decision and move ahead.
Yeah.
And it needs to be sooner rather than later, as far as I'm concerned. But at some point, even if, if we gather more information, if we get more specifics, at some point we need to decide if we're going to stay in Eugene Field or not. And that has to be a failure. And we have to have an alternative, I think. It seems clear to me now, and I don't know why it didn't seem clear before the bond election. But I think if we would have said, here's your two choices, public, we, you know, you pass the bond, or next year the kids are in modulars here. And, and our decision this time could be a bond for, say, rehabbing Eugene Field and doing that. But it still has to be backed up, I think, with an alternative. Here's your alternative if it doesn't happen. Because we have a responsibility to provide that alternative, rather than just say, okay, well, we're going to go status quo until we present another option.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, the bond was too complicated as well. It made, it made perfect sense to us, but if it was a, if we, if we was just focused on Eugene Field and possibly. on Eugene Field and possibly even some safety improvements, I think we had a better chance of passing versus we threw Mark Twain in there or a bunch of other stuff and it flooded metal to the waters for people.
If we, if we decide to close Eugene Field, that, that there has to be a list of fatal reasons for that. And we'll, we'll need to see that list. The voters will need to see that list. You know, I think it's, it can be clearly defensible, defensible. You know? So, let's start working on that list. Let's start working on that list and then try to defend it, or tackle, attack those, you know, put their G P M down and go for it, see if, see if we can remediate and fix, you know, see what that is.
So it's, we're gonna have to spend some money to get the information.
Don't we, I mean, haven't we kind of assembled it in three or four or seven, if you have any study?
Not to that detail.
Yeah, not to that detail, Tom. There isn't, okay, there isn't no structural thing, okay?
No, a couple of structural, a walkthrough of structural analysis, but, but deeper analysis, I think.
They're just starting concepts, now you're talking on the next level.
Okay.
One of the things that we just talked about briefly is the number of students in that building. And one of our conversations, as our consultants pointed out this evening, lots of issues are interconnected. And one thing that we have not addressed in this district, in my service here, is attendance boundaries. So if we're talking about 300 students versus 500 students in Eugene Field, and we have empty spaces or underutilized building space in other buildings, why aren't we talking about attendance boundaries? I mean, making efficient use of, of all of our space is what we really should be doing, I think, before we contemplate building new buildings and asking the voters to fund that. I think that was something that I heard in, in the bond election as well. If you start going down that path, we also need to throw in how district transfers and how that's in the mix. Those might be important things to say, yeah, I mean, it might be important things to conclude in that discussion. I mean, we're responsible for the stewardship of this school district, so.
In my sense, David, I think that's all valid. My sense is part of the visioning process will also dig to the root of some of what you're, you're discussing, in, in order to maybe get to that root and find out, though, what, what the merits or lack of merits of Eugene Field are. That's where this, the specific structural additional digging, and then that will be contributed to your conversation, in my mind anyway, related to the visioning process and some of those goals that you begin to identify for yourself. Maybe attendance boundary changes and changes to in and out of district transfers are warranted, I don't know, but should be in combination with what we know about Eugene Field.
Many districts adjust attendance boundaries routinely, automatically by policy every two years or so. So, something to contemplate.
So generally, Tim, do I hear any objection to continuing with this? I mean, I've made some notes to, some modifications to this, but continuing to establish this group.
Like a general consensus. What's a realistic timeframe?
Well, I placed here January of 2014 as, as options for consideration by the boards, that's three months. I would, you know, I think two, maybe three meetings, opportunity for them, and maybe if, if there is an additional need for some, some investigative work or exploratory work into the building that would allow opportunity for that to occur.
If we're gonna do that, it needs to be happened right away, the type of contract in place, to get people in there, get reported. You can easily get up, eat up two months, two, three months.
We actually, and we, meaning Scott Pillar and I, have actually done a little investigative work specific to, to that already, and have I actually identified an engineer at, at Oregon City who has, from ZCS Engineering, and we're asking, asking them for some scope of service specific to Eugene Field. However, what drew us to this engineering firm is their success in, in providing seismic analysis of schools in school districts and public entities, and being a partner in submitting the state seismic grant, and having a very good success rate at doing that. And so in order for us to apply for a seismic grant, whether it would apply to Eugene Field, Mark Twain, Bevreek, or any other school that we ultimately select, it's typically just one school that's part of that seismic grant, we have to have additional investigation from a seismic standpoint in order for that to occur. We've never had all of our schools in Silver Falls District evaluated from a seismic standpoint. We have Schleter a little bit, we have Eugene Field a little bit, we have the dogamia reports that are specific to four buildings, but not for the rest of the buildings in the district. So from my perspective, I think ZCS Engineering, based upon our research to this point, will provide, will also provide an avenue for us to qualify for the state seismic grant, and we believe they have the expertise to do the additional investigation to Eugene Field.
What about the other aspects of the building? Seismic's just one piece. We've got, we've got ventilation issues, we've got electrical issues, we've got fire suppression issues.
They do the, they do the full engineering studies while they're, what, I guess maybe I need to be clear, what drew us to them is their success with a qualifying for seismic grants.
They do full down.
They do. And they have a, and we've checked multiple references to this point, have from, I think, three school districts, two or three, and have been very positive and pleased with the references.
Have they, what's their, I guess, track record for taking, you know, a building that looks old and saying, no, you can fix that? Is there, are there, are there places out there that are successful that specialize in, in taking something old and, and finding the, the value in it? And have, you know, and have a track record of that? And, and if they come through and say, you know, look, we've done this, and if they look at this and go, no, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I do, and we can dig a little bit deeper into that. What, what we have discovered, or what we haven't discovered, is this, this group leaning toward one way or another. What you're getting at is, would this be an engineering firm that would come in and say, you just need to tear that building down?
You need a building.
Yeah.
Here, here, we can do that for you. That's, I'm, I'm afraid of that.
Right.
Of, of it coming off as saying, ah, they just using their, they're just here, you know, make some consulting fees and get their foot in the door for a new building.
We can check a little bit deeper. I am aware of a couple of schools that they have remediated, however, old schools that they have remediated to a seismic co-compliance standard and have been successful. With, in conjunction with the state seismic grant. So I'll, I'll ask, I'm...
It's good point, good on structural people. The work I do, I like, learned if I don't get the answer, I'm looking at one structural and, you know, literally I don't want to get a, get a different... It's more, it's more of an art than real science, so.
Yeah.
It's a shock to fix.
I wonder if I'd set it with the answer once.
For the school task force, you had kind of mentioned having people that were more middle ground people being part of that. I, I would see the benefit of having people that were also for seriously closing Eugene Field and people that were seriously, you know, interested in keeping it open, because then you really have, I mean, I'm not looking for, you know, fist pounders or anything like that, but at the same time, you know, have a different, you know, thought out process of why, that I think that would be actually beneficial to have the whole gamut of types of people, not just middle.
Are you looking for names from us?
Eventually, yeah, at some point, whether it's in either email or one.
So I agree with Julie.
That's a good point, Julie.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what I'm after as well.
We need to make a decision on the, of the plan. We've got two old buildings now hanging over our head, Schleter and Eugene Field.
Well, I want to talk about another one of them.
Which one of the other eight?
No, I just, I don't know it. I just have some other ideas.
Do you need board action to establish this task force?
Okay, so really what you needed is names, and then we need to contact those people. And do you, well, I guess you can ask us, or we can talk about it now. Do you want us to, how do you want that process to go? We recommend names to you, you contact them, would it help to make board personal invitations to people after we've discussed it and agreed that those are the right people, or?
I think it would be good to, to solicit names from each of you, thinking, especially if Owen, you have a few names in mind, I have a few names in mind, and I think we sort of generate this list, and if the list comes up to be 20 people, I think that's probably too much. And so we'll put that out in front of you, and then we, we whittle that list down to a group of 10 agreeable people that we think would be a balance, and provide all perspectives as well as good conversation and, and resource from a, from a facility standpoint, as well as, as well as a, you know, educational planning standpoint. So that, that makes sense to me, Owen. So my sense is I'll send you an email saying, please submit your names, I'll compile a list and get back to you. And that's assuming there's consensus on the board. Again, there's no action required, but if there's anybody in disagreement, I would want to sort that out with you.
I think there's consensus.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Andy, sale of steel hammer property?
Well, well, Tim, I, you know, there, there is no restriction on this agenda. I mean, we can get to steel hammer property, but if you had anything related to that topic, it sounds like you did.
Well, I'm just...
Now might be a good time for you to bring that up.
I'm gonna buy the property. No, no, but it relates to the sale of steel hammer property too, and I'm just, I've just been thinking lately that, I mean, we had a lot of things on the bond that were gonna be really good things, and things, you know, things we need. One thing I'm really concerned about is technology in this district, and what we're gonna need, you know, to kids and teachers, to, for the state testing coming, for Common Core, for all that stuff. I'm really concerned about that. I think we need to, and I think we need to look at, look at all our dollars, look at all our funds, you know, we have some construction excise tax dollars, we have some of that stuff. I think we need to just start moving ahead with some of this stuff in some kind of fashion. And I'm not sure how that would look, but I think we need to make some decisions as a board, say, okay, we're gonna do this much for technology, and we're gonna take the money, not out of the general fund, but out of construction excise tax, or, you know, wherever. I just think we need, I don't think we've been waiting to pass another bond to address some of the issues that we're, that we have to address. And I think we need to make some decisions, you know, say, okay, we're gonna self steel hammer, or we're gonna use that money for this purpose, or whatever. And that's, you know, the tearing down of Schleter might be beyond that scope of what we, what we can afford, but at the same time, we decided 2006 that building wasn't safe for kids when we passed the bond for the high school. And widely it's sitting there for, so I know, you know, I know our options are very limited, but I think that's something we need to take a good look at too, is how much would it cost to tear that building down? Because I think that would, to get rid of the old part of that building, I think would increase our options to do something with Eugene, to move kids out of Eugene Field, if that's what we decide to do. I just think we need to, I just think we need to start looking at all our dollars and moving ahead with some of these things, even if it's piecemeal, you know, technology wise or security wise or whatever, but we need to start moving ahead with some of this stuff, or we're gonna get two or three years down the road and say, crap, we're, we're in deep trouble. Because I've already heard of schools that don't have, who have, you know, piloted some of the state tasks, kind of like Mark Twain did, and they didn't have the time or the capacity to get all their kids through, and because it took a lot more time than what they, what they had originally thought it would. And I just think we really need to, and I know we're going through the visioning process and, you know, taking a year to do that, but I think some of this stuff is no brainer, and like the technology and some things like that, I think we just need to look at our dollars that we would have available to spend for some of this stuff and start moving ahead with some of it.
We have from operational point of view...
Yeah.
The efficiency of Gary's operation is really problematic now, because he's got, he's got high-end computers, he has all kinds of junk out there. And if he could, if he could standardize, his costs would be reduced, plus you'd have a much more efficient operation.
We heard tonight from our, our consultants again, that our budgeting's gotta follow our priorities, and I think we, from listening to everybody's priorities, I think we're pretty on, pretty well on the same page. My sense is, you know, we, I don't know where exactly we're gonna come out with our, our process here, but, you know, I'm, I'm in favor, Tim, but we're not gonna implement anything if we don't budget and spend our resources on it.
I agree with Tim. I think that technology has to be a priority, and we're a little bit behind you right now as it is. So I really favor an action plan that we can implement with the resources that are available to us outside, excuse me, the general fund.
There's some question marks, like you said, or question marks on the bond for people, there's a lot of different components, and it just kind of, and, you know, selling some of the district property eliminates some question marks, because that was one of the things that came up. You know, if we end up demolishing the old, old campus, I mean, that would eliminate a major question mark. So, you know, the, not advocating for that at the moment, but just saying that that would be certainly a benefit.
That really can be taken down cheaper than most people realize.
Well, they're tearing down the old Ritzville High School, which I took pictures of here a few months ago. They're tearing it down, just started a couple days ago, and it's interesting, it had it very similar in terms, I'm not sure size, but looks very similar to this high school. So I was gonna make some contacts up there and just find out what they're getting it done for. I think it was purchased by a private entity, so done on a private basis, I'm sure it wasn't a public...
They're taking, they're piecing it apart then?
I don't know, I'm gonna find out some details. Because it's been sitting there condemned with literally a chain link fence around it for, I think, like 15 years.
There's a company in Portland that does this kind of work, and they can take a building like that down with two or three guys, and just, and with them, huh? I got equipment that just basically takes a bill, takes, chops out a building, separates material for recycling and where it goes.
I was just gonna say, we're always gonna have the people, some people who are saying, oh, we've gotta save the old buildings, and we, you know, we like the looks of those old buildings, let's retrofit it, but, you know, we're, we have more information than most people because, because of where we sit. And I think eventually, sometimes we just have to make the decision, say, no, that school's not safe for kids, we said that in 2006, it's been seven years, so now we're gonna take it down, and that, we don't, you know, we don't know what we're gonna do with the space, but it does open up our options to do something else with this, with this campus.
Yeah.
But of course, that hinges on available dollars and things like that, but I think we really need to take a hard look at that. I guess I would request, Andy, that we start getting some information on what it would cost to take that building down, and also things we can do, you know, talk to Gary and things we can do to start increasing our technology capacities and things like that. And look at our available dollars.
I'll send you a contact for them.
How do I, I've just really been, it's just really been bugging me lately, some of this stuff, and I just think we need to move forward.
Yeah, I, I think on the technology, especially I have to move forward. The question I would like asked to our staff is what technology is a force multiplier in the classroom, and what is, what, what technology just gets in the way? I want to know what they like. They've been playing around with it, they've been, they got colleagues in other districts, we've got all kinds of technology all over, all over the district, what works and what gets in the way?
How much money do we need to, to put towards this? I mean, what's, what's it take to make a, a real difference? What's, what's the plan?
Well, Andy, you were talking about, telling me about servers and stuff the other day, that...
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the, the, the technology, the infrastructure technology budget from the bond was 1.5 million itself, and that would have brought, that would have made every building relatively the same with access and use, even with some hardware. So, you know, I, I think if you're talking specific technology, 1.5 million is all the money you have. I mean, truly, when you speak about construction excise tax, sale monitor, or, excuse me, monitor, steel hammer property and so forth, 1.5 million is probably about it. And again, I can get those figures and put them in front of you and, and go from there. And then, and then there's nothing left. I mean, it's like living on your savings and your savings is gone. So I, I think that's, that's the, that's the lens I'd like you just kind of keep in mind here, that, that's why we went for a bond, and that's why I think at some point in the future, we have to go for a bond again, because affordability, we aren't able to do what we need to do in this district to get the job done with a construction excise tax or savings.
Well, then we need to maintain it. Once we get it in place, then we have to have a regular maintenance, otherwise we're gonna be right back in the same boat. I think we ought to centralize the budgeting at that point, so schools aren't, individual schools aren't making a decision on technology. Gary, Gary, come here.
I have asked Brett and Gary to submit a proposal to me, and they've given me a range to this point. And again, keeping in mind, operation of the, the technology within the district, I asked them, what, what's your biggest nightmare? And their largest nightmare is, of course, a down servers. And we're still operating with two servers in this district that are literally 15 years old. And if one goes down, you know, we're, we're out, and, and we're out of commission. The entire district is out of commission for however long it takes to get that server back up. From Brett's perspective, minor, you know, a tech, a server upgrade in this district would, would cost in a range of about $35,000 to $60,000. That's just to give us the backup capacity to what we have right now. So what I told Brett is that I would bring a proposal to you at some point in the very near future to say, what do we need? We, we need a backup, you know? In other words, if the server goes down, I have to have a backup ready to go, cause this district functions so much on technology. And I've given him, let's say, $25,000, maybe $30,000, Brett, what can you do with that? Can you provide some reliable backup with that in this district?
We need server space, you know, a server farm someplace, I mean, there's gotta-
Well, and we're looking at other options as well, you know, but, and I'm not a technology guru, but I know that there are some, there's some questions about, you know, off-site hosting, what are the advantages, disadvantages, I can't tell you if those are or, or what the cost of those are, especially from a long-term standpoint.
Well, the technology is changing so quickly, I personally, it's probably the way to go, just, just in the utility requirements for servers now, the heat generation, this equipment is huge and you, and not only have to buy the equipment, install it, now you have to have the infrastructure in there to, to pull the heat out and, and keep the temperature requirements and keep the cleanliness down and it's just not a room anymore, it's, there's a lot more than that.
So, so part of the purpose of my, my input is that, you know, I think, take your pick, is it technology, is it infrastructure, is it what do teachers want, what's not working? Is it backup servers, is it off-site servers? I mean, take, take your pick and you're in the tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars very quickly. And you still have old buildings that need maintenance. You understand where I'm going with this?
Yeah, and I know-
So, it, it is part of the prioritization process and that, that we need to do based upon, and, and so some of the suggestions that, while, while I agree with them, Tim, everything from potentially demolishing Schleter and, you know, getting out of Eugene Field, if we did that without a bond, you have no more money.
And I, and I understand that. And I don't want to go and spend all the construction excise tax dollars to bring our technology like we were going to with the bond, that's not wise. But at the same time, I think there's, you know, we need to look at some steps we could maybe take to start that process, in my mind anyway. And another thing I'm just gonna throw out and I'll probably get shot down from this and it may not be, and it may totally not be the right thing to do, but one thing may, I think, maybe we should, we could borrow money. I mean, I hate for our district to do that, but I think we have some real needs and maybe we should look at the options of borrowing some money and paying it off over time. And if we do get a bond passed down the road, some of that, that money could maybe go to pay off the loan or something. I mean, I've heard other districts do that, I don't know if it's the right thing to do, I don't know if it's the wise thing to do, I'm just worried we're gonna get, we're gonna, especially with the technology piece of something, I'm just worried we're gonna, it could happen in a few years.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I'm just, I just wanted to throw that out there as another option too.
Yeah, looking, just kinda looking back, have we, have we possibly just made, you know, errors by maintaining high staffing levels and low classroom sizes at the, at the expense of our, of our technology budgets?
Yes.
And so, you know, when we did that, you know, we, we all did that to keep class sizes down, but have we, hindsight being only being 2020, are we maybe thinking that that was a mistake and maybe we need to look at that, put in a higher priority on our budgets, on our maintenance and our technology? So that's a very tough thing to say, but-
Well, without a bond, I think at some point you get there one way or another.
Yeah, that's a very awful option, but maybe that's something we gotta do.
I think generally the answer is yes.
Everything, everything's on the table here.
Compared to general maintenance, right, Tom? I mean, we've, we've prioritized staffing, cause that's our job, instruction, right?
Right, but now, here we are.
Right, right.
I would just say that, you know, the economy is not stable and to go ahead and, you know, for the future, think about doing a loan, I just, I think we have to maintain our budget. I know it's not the easiest thing to do or even the most, we want computers, we want technology out there, I think we need to get really creative, but I, taking out a loan, I just, I have, I'm not for it, just because it's putting in debt and you don't know what your future holds. Still, it's not looking that great.
I'm not gonna say anything, not right now.
It's tough calls, you know, cause we wanna do what's best for kids and-
Yeah.
What's best for kids is to have lower class sizes and-
Well, I think you're in a good position to make some decisions and, and one of them, I believe, is in front of you, and while there's no action on it tonight, I'm proposing that you take action on a resolution at your September meeting, and that's related to the sale of Steel Hammer. I think really by, by law, you, you make the decision to say whether you wanna designate it as a property that's no longer required for school purposes, you do that through a resolution and I take it from there, we put it on the market, very similar to what you did for Monitor School. And, and so I'm, I'm hoping that you can have a, a little conversation here tonight about whether there's anything else that you individually and as a board need in order to make that designation at, at the September meeting. To, to this point, I think you've, you've identified some, a variety of reasons for, for, you know, getting out of a Steel Hammer and that is, it's, you know, the, the overall total land that you have available for use, for future use of school buildings, when you think of Robert Frost and Mark Twain and all the other properties that you have in this district, even Schleter now for that matter, that you have an abundance of property and that you can afford to move away from Steel Hammer. I think the location is questionable for a school, I think I've heard that from many of you as well, that at one point in time, that's where I think this, this board and the, the former elementary district believed that a school could be constructed, but the growth of the city of Silverton and the community is not so much in that area as much as it is in other parts of town. Configuration of the property is kinda questionable, it's a little goofy, triangular, partially triangular shaped with very, very little frontage off of Steel Hammer Road. And I think based upon your engagement process, there's distinct public interest in seeing you move that property. I think most people know, you have that property, what are you doing with that property? And so, I think from a diligence standpoint, if there are any additional reasons that you'd like to kinda throw in that next, you can bring those out right now, but in my mind, those are solid reasons for why you can move from Steel Hammer property and put it on the market.
And I agree, but should we also be talking about the client's piece of Mark Twain and the lower piece of Robert Frost?
Yes, I mean, you, sure, I mean, it's, it's entirely up to, up to the board, you asked me to do a little bit more investigation about the Robert Frost property and I have worked with Dean Oster a little bit on that and he's done some investigation on both that and the Mark Twain property, and those are both saleable, dividable properties. In fact, the Robert Frost property, about 15 acres below Robert Frost School itself, is, is actually a portion of the approved Westside, Westside Land Use Development Plan by the City of Silverton, specific to development 20, 30, 40 years down the road, that, that portion would be used ideally from the city standpoint for residential, maybe senior residential, maybe some additional commercialization specific to the needs of the residences in that area. So I know you wouldn't hear any opposition from the city if this school district had an interest in seeing that they could divide off a portion of that property at this point. I, I would caution you on doing them simultaneously, I'd say focus on Steel Hammer, see how that goes. We are hearing that the, that the market for development property is, it's, it's not high volume right now, we're hoping that Steel Hammer will be saleable, but I think you can learn a lot from the sale of Steel Hammer that maybe you could apply to-
Yeah, I understand, otherwise might dilute the market a little bit.
Yeah.
Is, is Steel Hammer more valuable than Robert Frost's property?
We haven't praised Robert Frost, I don't know, Steel Hammer's appraised at about 425 pounds.
He's the chicken that's in, yeah.
He's the chicken, yes, okay.
Yeah, I say we move, we sell it. We have a start.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we've investigated that neither, none of these properties have the potential to build a school, so we, and when people say, what are you doing with it, well, we're saving and proving times are tough, and I think times are tough. So that's what we've, that's what we've been holding on to it for. Sounds like the right thing to do to move forward with that.
Has there been a conversation yet with the remainderman on the deed, on, on the deed on that property?
With who?
Would be the heir, I guess, on the, the property on Steel Hammer?
Yes, and, and, and we have Garrett Heeman Robertson, I can remember his name, looking into that for us, Gordon.
Gordon, what's his last name?
Hannah. Hannah, yeah, yeah, a couple conversations with Gordon, and he's, he's looking into that as well. But there was quite a bit of research completed in 2007, specific to that property, there was consideration for trade at the time, so quite a bit of investigative work was done, specific to that, and the title is very clear that, you know, there is, there is an easement that would have to be transferred to the new owner, water access to a one-inch main off of Steel Hammer would need to occur and that we would have to honor the heir's requirement that 20% of the revenue from the sale of Steel Hammer be placed in essentially like a trust account and the interest from that be used to support special education in the district. So, yeah, all of those would be honored, so there's nothing new since 2007 that was understood by the heirs at the time, so unless something changed, which is what Gordon will be looking into for us, there's no concern. So unless I hear objections from you or don't have a consensus again, I'll, I'll have a resolution prepared for you for the Steel Hammer property at your September 9th meeting.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, anything else on facility planning and funding?
Can I bring up one more thing, because I know we have a few members of the audience here this evening from Community Roots School and, and, you know, while you can have a conversation, otherwise we have a very good relationship with Community Roots School. Community Roots School is currently housed in four classrooms on the James Street side of, of the Schleter campus and, and what we did discover from, from, especially from the engagement process and some conversation, that there clearly is an interest in this community to include Community Roots School, and I think it's fair to say Bethany Charter School in conversation, specific to facility planning, what that looks like in the future. So I'm sharing that with you publicly, because I think there is a need for that, and while there wasn't necessarily an omission so much during the bond, I think it was just a matter of fact, that's how we moved ahead, for whatever reason that was, that Community Roots and Bethany Charter were not so much inclusive within the project. The, the interesting point of note, specific to Community Roots, which may put you in a, in a, I think, in a unique position of consideration about that option in our school district, is what role we, you play as a board and we play as a school district in supporting the facility needs of a charter school. And I think that's sort of new territory, Bethany Charter has a leased facility from us and as long as they keep functioning, I'm sure that's not going to change and, you know, we've offered them to sell it and purchase it and all that is good, but that's, they're kind of taken care of, Community Roots is not. And Community Roots is actually in, in, they have an additional year in the lease of their contract, specific to Schleter, and I have indicated to the administration at Community Roots that, assuming that I hear no major pursuit by this board to do anything substantial, substantial to, to the Schleter campus, at least over the course of the next year, that I'd like to even offer them an additional year in the Schleter campus now that we know that the bond has failed. And that makes sense to me and I think that's a vote of confidence in Community Roots School. While they're looking at other options, I think they're also hopeful, hopeful that they can work in tandem with you as a board as we move ahead in facility planning for the future. Let's say if a bond was placed on the ballot in the next year or two, that the consideration would be given by you for what does that mean for Community Roots? Get their input, have some conversation, and while there may be some questions about, you know, the, the responsibility of you, you know, being responsible for the facilities of Community Roots, I think there is room for conversation, specific to how can we partner? And Community Roots does have a capital campaign, they are developing revenue, they are generating some revenue for, for their future, and I think they're looking for a cooperative partner as they continue to have with Silverfall School District, but it will be a, a little different as, maybe an approach. As an example, if we were to do something with the Schleter campus, and this has been discussed, about lifting up Eugene Field and placing it on the Schleter campus, would there be sufficient opportunity to include something specific to Community Roots in that conversation and what that could look like? Partially even funded by Community Roots or maybe a, a long-term lease that will allow for the, the, the funding of, of what some of that accommodations for Community Roots may look like. So bottom line, my message to you is, I, I think it needs to be a consideration in the future, I think you just need to kinda have that in the back of your mind and begin processing that, about what that looks like for one of your, as a sponsoring district, one of your charter schools to be, be leaning on you a little bit and asking for some collaboration and assisting them with facility planning into the future. Unless you have any conversation, I just wanted to make sure that I stated that.
Anybody have anything to say? Personally, I don't know why we couldn't work some, something out down the line. I think Community Roots is doing an awesome job and they're a nice option for people, for people, you know, for people to come to this district, another option, which makes our district even stronger, so. My personal opinion is I don't see why we couldn't figure something out, whatever that might, like I have an idea.
Yeah, it's a-
I think it's important, they're a part of this district, the same as any other schools.
It's been my position from the inception of Community Roots, I think we're really obligated to help them with their facilities, so.
And there is, there, can we develop, or maybe, can we develop some policy just for charter schools in general? That takes care of Community Roots and Bethany and another charter school for the future or something, just that way everyone's treated the same.
Yeah, I think you can do whatever, whatever you do.
I'm just saying, just throwing that out there, just so people know what the rules of the game are, this is how the policy works.
And I guess my, at first blush, my, you know, that, that would have to be, that would be, have to be a kind of a very global approach, because the charter schools are so different in many ways, their charters are distinct and even their lease agreements are distinct, but that's correct, Tom, I think it's a general sort of supportive policy related to maintaining the integrity and the facilities of our current charter schools. Again, that's all within assumptions that they maintain the elements of the charter school law, that we still want to continue a good relationship, all of that, and I think we will.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, yeah, there's, there's many questions and many angles, and I just-
The language might be interesting.
Maybe, I don't know what, I don't know what that would look like, but yeah.
Anything else on that? Okay, 2013 draft board goals development. Are you looking for specific goals or do you, you know, you're gonna take this one?
That's why we have the visioning process going on.
I think the visioning process that we talked about tonight is a major one. I'm thinking one goal.
One goal.
It encompasses so much of other-
That's easy.
Yeah, let me just quickly highlight, you heard these last, at the last board meeting, you know, last, last year you had a transitional goal for Common Core State Standards, you had the goals for early release days and instructional strategy sharing, you had a cohort graduation goal, and, and a goal that you've had essentially every year since forever, a math reading and writing goal, and I think those are valuable. And then one was other specific to implementation of your long-range facility plan. So, you know, it, it clearly wouldn't be out of reason for you to specify something like visioning, but I also don't want to minimize the need for something else that may be specific, that you need to continue to keep in front of you and, and drive your-
This Common Core is gonna be a big deal.
The Common Core we need to keep.
Needs focus, we had a lot of discussion tonight about facilities, I've got these being there.
They're all, they're all kinda related, I mean, keep the ones about instruction for sure, just throw something in about the visioning process and what they-
Which encompasses all of those.
Yeah.
You know, would, would it be reasonable to, to, and again, I can craft something for you, but to, to draft a goal that really is more around the visioning process, you know, with some delineation specific to those areas that you have to remain mainly targeted, like Common Core transition and, and, you know, facilities or, or whatever, I mean, pick two or three of those, so you'd still focus largely on your visioning purpose for the year, but you'd have some subsets within that.
That makes sense to me.
Well, I don't know, the Common Core, the, the facilities things you're talking about tonight are more tactical, for the visioning is more strategic.
More of an implementation component to the first two.
So they're, they're a little bit different.
I don't wanna minimize the importance of those either by, by kinda wrapping it all together, I'd like to keep them a little more, those, the instructional ones, the Common Core, I'd like to keep those personally specific and add a new one for the visioning. And, I mean, you could do away with the facilities and one that, and tie that in the visioning.
Sure, okay.
And then tie them all together by saying how the, you know, Common Core and everything relates to-
By doing that, you're saying we probably won't do anything on the facilities this year? Maybe we won't, but-
I'd like to develop some, some, one of the goals that has that time for implementation, you know, embedded within the goal, so that it's not just a, that to me changes a goal, changes an aspiration into a goal. If you aspire towards something, it's just kind of out there and if we put that time component, then, then I think we have some implementation component.
Like for what kind of goal?
Well, like for a goal with, well, I was thinking that the technology as a component of, of the facility- of, of the facilities. So if we had a timeline goal in there for some facilities, then we may have a strategy or a portion of that maybe that we're going to actually implement some of the technology upgrades.
The visioning thing is a year-long process. You could do a sub, whatever you call it, you know, make part of that, make part of the visioning goal, look at technology, whatever upgrades we can do in the next six months or...
That's outside, that's outside the visioning.
Okay, I know. I'm not great at goals.
Visioning's long-term, it's, it's other stuff, I think, stuff we want to do this year. We talked a little bit about measurable, it really should be measurable somehow as well.
It's the acronym, the SMART, the Specific, Measurable, Attainable.
Smart.
So maybe a specific one around technology and a specific one around Eugene Field.
Can I suggest that, that, you know, if, if, if you want to have something around technology and Eugene Field, that you allow me to craft a goal that can combine that into one? Because I, I hear you saying yes on, you know, let's do some investigative work on Eugene Field, which will no doubt involve technology, and I also hear you asking about, let's do some assessment district Y, which we've already done, but what can we do if we don't have any additional revenue sources? I believe that's also facility-related and I can put that together and capture in one goal with some kind of a metric. I can provide that. Again, I'm, I'm trying to, your, your visioning process is going to be a big time slot, don't necessarily put that in minutes, but it's, it's going to be your priority this, this year. And, and while I think you can have maybe a second or a third goal that may not be as so prevalent, I, I just want to caution you that that visioning is going to take a lot of time. We can do the others and some things that obviously that we do, we don't require to have a goal because we do them because you asked me to do them or you agreed to do them. But they should be around what your priorities are. Your priorities, I hear you saying are around visioning, I still hear a hint of, of facilities and technology, I hear Common Core transition. Those are the three big ones that I hear from you.
That sounds good.
It's a sentiment because it's getting close to 8 o'clock.
Yeah, my mind's kind of gone, it's like, yeah, whatever. No, I don't need to be flipping.
So Andy, out of those...
I know it needs to be better on down somewhat.
Out of those, which ones are we, are we really dropping from last year then?
Graduation cohort tracking, which we do already, and the other one is specific to the, the use of your release days, which we'll continue to do and have a plan for this year. Oh, and, and we haven't dropped a, a specific target to math reading and writing, or we've always included that. However, the caveat to that is you now have your achievement compact, which actually you'll have in, in form for approval at your September meeting. You've seen it a couple of times now, but that is very clear targeted goals for the 40-40-20 goal of the governor through 2025, so that in a sense, in essence takes care of itself.
All right, I'll put those together.
Anything else on goals? Anything else? Then we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.